Where you're seeing some positive deviance, where you're seeing some areas of maybe disparity. So, we're gonna spend a little bit of time kinda going through some synthesized notes from our three times together. And then also give you an opportunity to look at some information that the superintendent's leadership team looked at regarding the opportunity and achievement gap. And so, we wanted you to see those reflections and how they looked at the data. Then, we're gonna get into our groups. So, we'll stay in these groups for the start of the next two exercises. So, we'll talk about the vision. So, Jonathan, our colleague Jonathan Garcia is gonna come back with some synthesized of your vision in case you don't sleep with it yet. We will, so we'll kinda look at the work and the information that you, after your memories have been jogged, we'll take a look at the educator essentials, the graduate profile, and the system shift, the graduate portrait, the system shift. And we'll make sure that you, you know, have some time to kinda review that. And of course, you'll be paired with staff who are present here so that you can have like a pretty robust discussion. We'll do some group conversation, and then we're gonna do kinda like a modified world cafe. Well, you'll get into four groups. In your four groups, in the first round, what you'll do in your groups is that you and the staff who are assigned to your table will start to noodle around doing a SMART goal, using the information where your interests lie. You'll draft one, and then most of the members will travel to another table, give your feedback, edit that, travel to another table, travel to another day until you make it around the world. And then, we'll give that sort of home group some chance to look at the feedback that you've got, refine the goal. Then, we'll come back together, we'll look at what the four groups did altogether. And then, we'll make notes if you still have any questions or areas where you want some more information, and then I think we'll be able to call it a night. So, hopefully, you'll feel like this night builds on the work that we've been doing over the last three sessions. And, you know, let's jog your memory a little bit, because it's been at least two weeks since we've talked about this, alright? So, I'm gonna pass out another document. And so, what I'm gonna propose that we do while you're eating, while you're recovering from your swearing-in ceremony, I wanna hand out this document here. And this document, basically, I'll walk you through it. But on the first page, who remembers June 12th?
I sent you my stuff. Everybody else.
Yeah.
Yeah. We were downstairs living there for a long time, and you were sad.
I was doing really great. Doing really well. I have to say.
So, on June 12th, after you had, you spent some time with A.J., you took out your boxes of binders, and we went through and looked at all of the data, got you really sort of familiar with the data. You got to look at multiple data sources, you had to do some, find some facts, and also come to some conclusions. So, from that work session, at the very end, you reported out on sort of what you were finding in these areas around English Language Arts, Mathematics, Ninth Grade On Track, and the four-year cohort graduation rate. And this is where you were looking at those nine measures, okay? Is it starting to make, are you starting to remember?
Slowly. Can you repeat again what TSI and CSI stands for?
Ooh.
Comprehensive.
Targeted and comprehensive.
These are the designated schools of comprehensive support and targeted support.
Initiative? It's from SF, it's sort of coming out of ODE.
What is that?
It's what the acronym.
Oh.
An acronym for comprehensive.
Supports intervention.
Okay. Yeah. It's targeted, okay. I'm just so glad that you answered that.
Yeah, thank you.
I was gonna say like.
You learned, you all learned something today, so that's great.
So, do you guys start to remember that? So, this is just some high-level sort of notes that came from that. The second set of data that you have are some of the work that, oh, yes, Scott?
And I'd really like to get a definition of the four tiers, TIDR, that we went through the, all the assessment data, you know, tier one, tier two, tier three.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can get that.
You know, four is above average, or whatever they are, some kind of clear definitions of what those.
How do you fit into those categories of what's right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. If not tonight, then there is.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so, so then, after, who remembers June 18th? This is the last time we were together. So, at the very end of that session, I asked you to start thinking about data and trying to sort of get to a place of where some general areas or goal areas. And in each of your report outs, you had some ideas about things, but there was also some questions about measurements and some things to consider in terms of how those get measured. So, then, turning to page two, what you have are some reflections on racial equity and social justice. So, I just wanna, you know, I think on a personal note, I just wanna thank you all so much. It really means so much to me, who gets, you know, who gets to do this work, to have all of your leadership and commitment on racial equity and social justice. It feels, it feels really good to be able to do this work, knowing that we have your support and commitment, and that you all have taken such, and have had such a lot of experience in working in this area. So, what SLT did, the superintendent's leadership team, we've been sort of basically going through similar exercises as part of our sort of strategy building towards a strategic plan. And so, we've been looking at the data, and one of the things that we talked about was sort of like, how does institutional racism sort of get expressed in educational systems? And so, what we looked at were sort of four, five areas of how that gets expressed, and then looked at, how does our data either reinforce that, or where does the data point to where we may have to do some work? And are there areas in the vision that might point to how this work could, how the vision could reinforce work to address these issues? So, this is new information for you. And so, what I want to do is give you a couple of minutes to be able to review this, and then, we're gonna do just pair share, so you don't have to move just yet, so you can continue to make your way through dinner. So, what I want you to do is go ahead and read through this document, and then, I have three questions for you. In your pair share, what data do you still have questions and or want additional information from from the staff? So, go back to, go back to the binders, you know, go back, Scott did a great job of modeling that. The second one, in terms of all the observations that we're sort of synthesizing these notes, or maybe your own observations, what's really compelling to you? Like, what's sticking out as an area where you want to focus? And then, as you're thinking about what's compelling, what are goal areas that you're ready to think about that are starting to emerge for you, okay? So, you'll, I'll give you a couple of minutes to read, and then, maybe just turn to your partner. So, Belupay and Max, Andrew and Julia, Shalan, Amy, Rita and Amy.
Amy, you got a copy of them.
Yes. And then, Scott, you can be my partner, or you can be, you can be in the partner.
I'll just.
Are we supposed to be reading the whole thing, or just the SLT reflections? Whatever you'd like. Yes, sorry. So, the extras are there. And. I think the extras are around this as well.
Do you see where?
Well, yes, yeah.
Can I go? You can show me while I read.
These are the three little sections.
Yeah. Yeah. What goal are you doing? Yes. David, you have some questions?
I'm sure that's great.
Well, I have a question. What was your question about?
Still.
I still read through them.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. So, what? Yeah. Yeah. So, what? Yeah. Yes. 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 Yeah. So, what? Okay. Yeah. Yes. 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 That's not the story. But how do we, I always said that it was a graduate, but I'm like, how do we ever that and say this? But I do think it's a process, and how you change. Yeah, I just felt like, how's differences in student response to everything, or everything's just. Yeah, that's it. I need such a huge one. I'm like, I'm like, I can't, I just don't want to hear. Yeah. Yeah. I think this. Yeah. Yeah. I'm gonna try. Good. Explain to them what they're doing here. Yeah. What you want. So, this is, I think, the fact that you don't. Because. I feel like I'm the. Later, you know? Yeah. But. This, yeah, yeah. So, what data? Yeah, I do like there's a hassle around, you know, times of loving, so not just academic markers? Yes. Yes. Yeah. Yeah. There's. Overage. Actually, we didn't. Things we don't like to eat at all. Data. That seems like I'm starting to just like. Emotion. I think that's the only difference. So. Because I was, I was a bad person, so I tried to, but I thought. As I was running. It seems like. Seems like what? You said. Yeah. Which is getting me into a few like. College. Where was the parents? Any question? I mean, they can't be directly. And then, I have a question. Yeah, yeah. Of course, yeah. Or is it something? Yeah. That's not, yeah, six percent. Give us. Against the date test, or, you know, then you're kinda like, okay, we're basing this on analysis of data. Or is it a short day? Yeah. Yeah. Or have no. No, no. And I would like to. Maybe I think it's. Well, I'm a broker. And. And I would like to. Maybe I think it's. Well, I'm a broker. And. 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 Just trying to tie it back to the vision with each one of the. We're tracked around. So. 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 Maybe there's some questions about. Like, pretty solid. Either way, versus. It's like. Let's define. See what happens. But that's how it works. Because of the way that that progressive. So, that's why I like those. Thirty percent. Ninety percent of the. I don't know. If you're gonna pull in on your. But it sounds like. I wonder if like, is there a measure? The way that it's. So, for example. I respect. I do. It's like. It's like. That's like an old school. So. Right. I talked about a bunch of. Teaching by like ten. So, strategies that are failing. And then, I don't need that. If we just measure like. The effects. As proportionality. And so, it might be that you have. They have. They have. Yes. This is like. Yes. These are the. Let's do maybe three minutes and 25 more seconds, and then, we'll come back together. Three minutes and 25 seconds, on the dot. Yeah. I do. How proficient? Yeah. So, like, Scott, you're actually talking about. The ratio of four to the other. I agree. Maybe not after earlier. Oh, no, there's services up there. Sex and women think through. Where you're mapping. No, yeah. Yes. So, how do we measure what? And how do we measure? All this. Yeah. And there's. Actually. Yeah, yeah, yeah. By the time. It's like it's still. You're still. But then we're getting caught up in it. Okay. Works. Constantly. She's like having to like right now. I can tell. Ready? Yeah. She gives. Right. It's nothing to laugh about. Yeah. So. It's just everything. Oh, no, I did, actually. But that's what we get. So, as far as like. You want, I mean, obviously, you want to fix it so bad, and it's so much, you have to do in order to fix it, and everyone is gonna have a fair experience in life, I mean, life itself, but then. It all spirals. Like, my brain is spiraling right now. Yeah. What is it? College. So. For the last three or four years, there's so many. Yeah. Well, like, I don't know what goes into that. What data goes to that? Having to be. Adults.
Alright, let's come back together. It's been three minutes and 30 seconds, more likely, but how was your conversation?
I've seen it. Yeah.
Awesome, awesome.
I have a lot of information right around my brain now.
I love it. Well, so, did you all get a chance to go through the questions? Maybe we can just start with, as you reviewed, as your memory was jogged, as we got back into our June 12th and June 18th, was there, did you all have any questions? Scott talked about, I'm getting so nervous whenever I say Scott, or I want to make sure I'm saying the right thing. So, Scott said that he wanted to understand more about the tiers. Were there any other questions about the data, or places where you wanted more clarification? Yes, Michelle?
On page one, ninth grade on track, what are, what are we measuring? What goes into that?
Sure, let's see, does, oh, it's credit. It's six credits.
Right. Earned.
So.
Okay, so, just the fact that they earn six credits, not, there's, is that the level that we're getting, we're not diving into, when they're competent at those six, they've just taken six? Yeah. That's the current measure. Oh. That's the only measure? Yeah, that's what I was, that was what I was getting at.
So, a lot of school districts track off practice, but they, some of them have much more well-rounded indicators, and they're not just looking at, are you caught up on the course rates, but is attendance an issue? Is course raise an issue?
Yes.
Cognitive entry level to ninth grade already indicate that we should flag you for an individualized support plan? So.
Yes.
Here, we're just tracking.
But that's the stuff that we're tracking. Letters, right? Yeah. Here, they're on track. But that's the stuff, I mean, we have built the capacity to track a lot more through this ninth-grade student success teams through measure by year, but they're not technically feeding into the on-track.
Right. But if the board would say, we think entering ninth grade or ending ninth grade is a good time to redo a comprehensive check, what would it look like to do a sort of query for those things, to let's build a system that will dashboard that? So, on a semester basis, you would start to see for every enrolled ninth grader, what kind of that funnel out, you know, for.
Because what that moves toward, I'm sorry, what that moves toward is not just, I mean, if all you're looking at is how many credits you've accumulated, then all you're gunning for is graduation. But if you're looking at these other factors that have to do with proficiency, or well-being, or whatever, then you're caring about how that kid ends up at graduation, and how ready they're, how prepared they are for the next step.
If it doesn't help you identify what supports and interventions that kid needs, all you know is they don't have unit completion.
Right.
Is it that?
Yeah, yeah.
Is it a charge? Is it, what is it?
My other question about, on the same topic, is what do we know about students in the eighth grade that tells us that they'll be successful getting to the, besides the number of units completed, are there some, you know, quantitative measures? Are they? Ready for high school type things? Are they able to think critically? Are they, you know, in Algebra II? Are they nice people?
As a parent of a eighth grader that just finished eighth grade, I'm not sure critical thinking is timeless sometimes.
Nice is relative. You're in seventh and eighth grade.
Yeah.
Now, that's it.
Speaking for.
With Andrew and I, the question, we sort of, it's a stupid word, but purging it from a different way, because not like, what data are we missing, but more, what goals we want to set, and then, therefore, what data do we need? Versus, just looking at the data, because, for example, the data in, you know, around the Sbak, you know, it is what it is, and like, some schools, you know, have full participation, or not have data.
Right.
So, it seems, instead of like going through what may be considered an incomplete data set, or in just one measure, we liked the A.J. approach of where are we trying to get? And then, you know, staff providing, you know, their expertise of, here's what we think the measures would be. If you, if you're trying to get here, what are the measures that would indicate you're on track?
Yeah.
Rita and I just skipped to question three.
Yeah, because I think that we'll, there'll be an opportunity for that, because I think once we get a sense of like what your goal areas are at the end of the night, then there'll be a nice interactive moment for staff to be able to then say like, okay, well, here's, you know, here's your suggestions about measurement, here's our suggestions, how can we, you know, sort of have a conversation about how that best works? So, that's great. Any other questions about the data? Okay, so, as you look through the observations, or even.
I have a look into the data.
Oh, sure.
The disproportionate discipline data. I'm just looking at it, you can see a clear trend that there appears to be disproportionate discipline based on race and gender. But it seems that the data is not necessarily maybe consistently gathered or applied. So, where one school maybe, we're gonna count that as a out-of-school suspension, the others, another school for the same thing may say, you know, he's having a hard day, we send him home, because, you know, we think tomorrow he'll come back, you know, ready to learn, and they won't count that as like a reason to get home.
Yeah.
So, that's a question, how is that, how consistently applied? And is it, and yeah, consistently gathered?
Yeah.
So, it is true that there is a history of, there isn't integrity or fidelity to both the collection and the in-school policy around that, so this is an area that is important. I'm doing it to that work regardless, but it's what we're gonna focus on, we want to like ramp up our guidance and expectations around, when is it appropriate, how do we record every incident, et cetera? So, we already voiced those questions when we looked at them, or it doesn't seem, it seems off the house as possible. So, that's something, you know, that's an example of something you would want to get really tight about.
I'd say the same thing for the disproportionate special education identification for students of color, because of that high level of disproportionality as well. And that the highest level of disproportionality shows up for black children?
Right, so, just to be exact about it, because right now, we're actually in a pretty contentious conversation in ODE about the identification, the disproportionate identification of students ruled by race. Lots of districts in the state right now are having the same issue with ODE. Brenda, can you just give us the two sentence version of the risk ratio?
Yeah, currently, we are found over-identified for black students with ID, which is intellectual disability. The weighted risk ratio changed this year from 2.0 to 4.0.
Can you explain what that means, the weighted risk?
So, it's two times the rate of students, of white students are baseline.
Twice as much.
And so, we were at 4.0, now we are at 2.0. The, what we're taking issue with is that they're retroactively causing us to be disproportionate by three years. So, on your third year of significant disproportionality, they take away 15% of your IDEA dollars, which is your individual with disabilities education.
That's a great idea.
So on your third year of significant disproportionality, they take away 15% of your I D E A dollars, which is your individual with disabilities education dollars. So, and you have to put it into early interminging dollars. The problem is, we weren't identified, we weren't notified until June 10th, after the budget was completely done and approved, or, well, approved a couple of weeks after we, well, one day after we had the discussion. And so we're currently working with other school districts and our legal team is working on it. And so they are open to having us do a counter resolution, you know, or to do that. We don't disagree that the weighted risk ratios should be reduced. We just disagree with them changing it retroactively three years past.
So generally?
Because it was higher, or because it's higher now?
Now it's lower, now it's only at 2.0. We've only ever been at about 2.3, which for us is still, that's still high. But.
But for an urban district like Portland, just because this has been a deep area of my own work in finer districts is, there's been significant progress, but we still have one area where there's a disproportionality. And so we're going to keep working on that. What Beaverton, PPS and other districts have issue with though, is you don't get to change the goalposts retroactively.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that's what we're in contention with them about. We know that it's higher in one particular special education category with one race group, black students. So we're going to keep staying committed to sort of working that, so it's a more representational proportion to the broader student body.
And why would they take money away? I mean, this is like our little N C L B.
So it is, so under I D E A federal Fed law, you have to subside 15% of your monies if you're disproportionate over the course of time. So that's not insignificant. So for me, just to give you exact numbers, we're about 40 black students, too many identified in this category. The penalty or the consequence O D is proposing is that we have to set aside 3.7 million dollars of our I D E A monies towards developing what's called a coordinated early intervention plan. That's something that I've architected before as well. And so, but we have to maintain maintenance of effort, and so we have to leave up the 1.7 million to continue our Fed services. So that's what we have issue with, and that's what we're trying to sort out now. So just to give a little bit more fulsome context, if you expect disproportionality is that there are actual, you know, state and federally defined risk ratios around what, how do we define the thresholds for disproportionality that are comparable to distinct demographics in your district?
And how do we feel generally about the consistency of our practices of identification?
How do we feel about our identification?
Identification of students with special needs. I believe that we are over-identifying students generally with special needs primarily because we don't have a multi-tiered system of support. We don't have tiered levels of intervention. And so what has happened unfortunately is, once we do an intervention, if that doesn't work, we make a referral to special ed.
Because they feel like they have no other options.
Exactly. So as we roll out multi-tiered systems of support over this two-year cohort model, that's when we can actually start to see the benefits and reduction of special ed referrals. And then that's also when we can start focusing on the inclusion, our inclusion practices.
So any other questions about the data? All right, any other, so let's move on to the second question. As you were looking through these observations, we've talked about a couple of them. Was there anything that was particularly compelling for you that you wanted to share or that your partner wants to share? That you discussed? Maybe?
One of the things that was compelling to me was under college inquiry ready. Under served students' growth in core classes as measured by whatever. So again, just that notion of really looking at proficiency and mastery and not high school graduation. So that's something I'm really interested in.
Other folks?
Just the unequal outcomes of students. The other observation of the data is, again, either, it didn't seem to measure the things that matter in some ways, or measure, the right measure for actually where we want students to be. It was just a measure.
You say the things that matter, can we just distinguish between what we're held accountable to as a school district and schools? Or what matters to us?
Well, I don't think it's what matters to us, it's what, so we have this state data. And to me, I'm not sure, especially a lot of kids don't take the test, or.
Which we also suffer consequences.
Right, it's one measurement, I mean, a whole host of things. It's not a judgment on what was given us, it's just, that doesn't seem like the right data to get after the things that we've talked about.
The graduate portrait, there's a whole lot of that that we have to portray.
I think it was, I think, I don't remember who said it, but someone was talking about considering, you know, what students need as opposed to what was currently being measured or being required to be measured. I felt that was.
That's what Michelle brought up, well, six credits, so it's the proficiency.
Also, I mean, our workforce and the way we work looks so different now, especially when I was in school. And my concern is just that we, you know, want to turn out, you know, 21st century graduates, not just someone that's like reading and writing and knows how to get to class to class, but that has the critical thinking skills. I mean, people don't even work in offices anymore. They're working with a laptop in a coffee shop. You know, the gig economy, like what do our 21st century graduates need in order to go to that next step?
Okay, if you use the gig economy one more time on the screen. The gig economy is actually about this big, it's way over.
It's helpful having the contest on for things.
It's way overhyped, way overhyped. The robots are coming for you.
But, yeah, I mean.
If you're 24 and 25, the gig economy is the side gig.
Side hustle.
Yeah.
It's keeping, I work with an immigrant refugee population in East Portland, and that is like, not just the gig economy, that's people's jobs, that's a secondary, with food on the table. Like dismal, anyway.
And I agree with everything you've been saying.
Turning out graduates that are ready for the 21st century.
Right, and I totally agree with that. Is there a staging question though, that if our students aren't graduating, do we first focus on getting them graduated? And then focus on getting them to fit the student profile?
Portrait, graduate portrait.
But I think the graduating is too low of a standard.
If you're graduating without skills, or.
Or proficiency.
You're not without skills, but with, without meeting some kind of proficiency targets, then you're going to pay the price.
And also without, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And also without having been exposed to a lot of different opportunities that help you actualize yourself, for lack of a better word, that help you find your passion. I mean, my son came tonight, my 16-year-old son came tonight in a pair of shoes that he made in his product design class.
Wow, wow, I agree.
No, he made, he cut the leather, he molded the sole, he, you know.
Wow.
And that's the highlight of his day at school.
That's super cool.
So we should all.
Well, I mean, and we've known for years, they didn't want the average age of an apprentice in the U.S. is like 27 or something like that. I don't know if it's still there, but for decades it was, and that's because it's, because we don't have the adequate exposure, support for kids finding their passion in those fields, that they kind of stumble into it.
So I think if we do decide to make something like graduation rate a goal of the board, then we have to really talk about what does, what do we think it means to graduate? Whether that, I mean, if it's, we said, okay, you have to be on track, it's six credits, but all Ds, is that acceptable? And I, when I was in AmeriCorps, we would have college graduate, or high school graduates who couldn't read at sixth grade, beginning level, and I was hiring them for a reading tutoring program. So we had to start giving people a reading test basically to decide if we could hire them, because a high school graduate was not able to read at that level. And so if we say graduation, what does that, what does that look like or mean for us? I think that's kind of what we're circling around is, what kind of metrics are we looking at for other schools? And what does it mean to graduate high school?
There you go. So I think by the time we're talking about graduation rates, it's too late. That's not an actionable goal, I mean, in any real sense, because it's, that's the endpoint of 13 years' worth of stuff. I mean, if we're trying to, if we're trying to come up with goals that will kind of drive changing things, then I don't think graduation rate is going to do it. We've got to push it way back and figure, what are the foundational stepping stones that you need in order to get somebody?
I view it as a lagging measure. I mean, it's a worthless measure, but you're right, it's measuring 10 to 15 years later.
Because if you take care of this down here, that'll take care of itself.
Yeah.
Theoretically.
So as you think about that, but as you think about that, what are sort of like goal areas that you're starting to land on?
Before you go down to pre-k, Rita, I just want to make a little bit of a counterpoint to your point, which gets back to the ninth grade on track, which is like, yes, it's a lagging measure, but we also have to triage. You know, we have to look at our kids.
Oh, I mean, I think, I mean.
Ninth grade on track is one of the greatest goals.
Yeah, I mean, I think ninth grade is something.
I think we have to distinguish between the goals that we pick out and focus on and what our staff is going to be doing. Because if we, if we just said, you know, third grade, which I think, I could argue that position, just third grade, that doesn't mean our staff isn't going to be doing triage, like in graders and everything, but it's what are we going to focus on? And.
I'm not sure I understand that, because it seems like, it doesn't matter if we're focused on, if we're not, I mean, united with staff and they're focused on it as well, it seems like, you know, that should be driving the, driving the enterprise.
Well, what I'm hearing you say is, it's not like, if we say, okay, we want to focus on third grade, it's not like we're going to stop having eighth grade.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, well.
That's what I took.
And we're not going to stop saying, stop assessing eighth graders and seeing, okay, who's behind here? What kind of support services can we have to try to help them succeed freshman year? It's not like we're going to stop doing that. It's just where is our focus as a board going to be? Which is going to focus the administration in part, but it's not going to be drop everything else just to do.
And this is a really important point that I think we need to make sure, you know, a good performance management system has key performance measures that the board has chosen three, four, or five of those. And it has dozens of performance measures that are still being tracked on a regular basis by staff, by people in those departments, et cetera, that is still measuring your effectiveness, your system. The focus is on those key performance measures, and which the board may change. Two years from now, we may decide to, you know, move all those key performance measures back to a regular performance measure and elevate something else, because that's an area that we need to focus on.
Yeah, well, three years, three years from now, when all our third graders are proficient at everything, then we can move up to.
Then we'll be the first district in America. But it is important, I want to make sure staff are thinking about this, as you're putting together this performance measurement system, right?
Yeah.
And presumably, all this data is already being used by staff every day, right?
Yes, I mean, well, and going back to Coralie's point around, there's measures that were required for compliance reasons that we have to, that we have to maintain, as well as within each department, there are those key performance measures. I think this is the opportunity for us to create some great alignment, right? So to hear from you all about sort of like, what are those sort of focus areas? And then we can work on creating that alignment, strategies and other measures.
So I'd really like to get off of like the basic, a lot of discussion about the basic compliance measures, because. I mean, I guess this falls into Scott's category of like, it still needs to happen, but it's not at all aspirational and, you know, no parent says, you know, I want my student to be a ninth grade on track with all the six, you know, I'm going to call it, declare victory if they've got six Ds. So I think we have an opportunity to, in just the goal setting.
Except for that would be a victory.
Yeah.
Well, but we should be saying like, what do we think freshmen want to, is really on, what's really on track? Not get from a compliance standpoint, or, you know, getting the 24 credits of all those or whatever. Low mark, yeah.
That's what A.J. said, right?
Pardon?
That's what A.J. said, that should be the minimum, right? Like, what's the?
Right, well, I'm not even sure it should be our focus. We, I like, you know, staff, they've got to do that because that's just part of being, you know, part of the bigger educational bureaucracy in the state and the country. But when we think about how we're going to want to engage staff and teachers and principals and parents and students, it's not going to be, we've got to get this compliance measure, it's going to be, you know, it's going to be what's in our vision.
Yeah.
So it's simply, we should shift off of.
Yeah, you're asking for, let's keep our expectations high.
That's great.
Is there some reason?
Also really nice of having you.
As a goal, we wouldn't focus on third grade black boys to have like the lowest, you know, single-digit rate of passing? Literacy, thank you, because then we've got to go through the fourth, fifth, sixth, and all the teenage stuff not being engaged from the time they're eight. So I'm just curious if there's some reason why we wouldn't focus on that statistic?
Not to the exclusion of everything else, but actually that statistic is a proxy for the health of the systems.
Well, and those single digits exist in high school level for black boys too, there's 6% provision of that.
Because they don't change from elementary to all of a sudden to high school.
They just get taller.
Yeah.
Well, if they're not getting those interventions and that input to make a shift, then how can we expect them to?
I was asking if there's some reason that we would not focus on that.
Hopefully, a friendly amendment might be historically underserved. Our native kids are doing pretty abysmal as well.
High grade students.
Yeah, I guess I, the specificity for me just came from, just because, so you know me, and some of the work I do, it's good to call out specific, yes, migrant children, yes, Native American children.
Yes, black boys.
Yes, black boys, to say it and then we address it. And we focus on that rather than just saying like, all kids are black or all marginal kids, because those terms are just easier way for people to feel comfortable around, talk about race.
And each student group.
And to not do the work, yes.
We get a specific set of strategies, right?
And each of those, yes, right.
Some things that are common, there are some things that are unique, and so they have big implications for our work.
Thank you for saying that, that is so true. Just the housing work I do, you know, if we say Africans and African-Americans, Africans are coming from more tolerant countries sometimes and have completely set of different traumas than kids that grew up in the hood, you know, that have different, you know, generational traumas. And so if we call those two groups out, then we're able to address. Thank you for saying that, I recognize it.
Well, so keeping it aspirational is a nice segue into talking about the vision. So this is, we spent a little bit of time with the vision, so I did want to have you all go through the vision elements so that you can start to think about potential measures and goals. So on page 30, no, whoops, sorry, on page 19, page 19 lists out the elements of the graduate portrait. So I'll just read them through. Optimistic, future-oriented graduates, reflective, empathetic and empowering graduates, influential and informed global stewards, positive, confident and connected sense of self, powerful and effective communicators, resilient and adaptable life-loving learners, transformative racial equity leaders, inquisitive critical thinkers with deep core knowledge, and inclusive and collaborative problem solvers. So that's what over 19,000 different points of things, that's sort of like.
Lot of sticky notes?
Yep, that is the coalescing of all of that in terms of the graduate portrait. So as you think about the goals for the system, these are something to consider. If you turn to page.
I just want to state the obvious too, which is that as a school system, we haven't focused on traits and attributes, characteristics, you know, we've focused on skills.
There are a few examples of school system.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's worth talking about in this whole process a little bit too, because we have to be really clear, and I think really clear-eyed about, do we really have the levers to affect this? Because educators know presumably good strategies to get somebody to read, even though we're not doing a great job.
we're not doing a great job. But, but do we know how to create inspired global thinkers? Or, you know, I think that's worth, we're really being realistic about.
How do we do? Anything we do, how would we know?
Right. What is, what does that, what does that look like?
That would have mentioned that.
Yeah.
So on page 27.
I actually think that's happening in a number, more classrooms than you may think right now. It's just that we don't have any way of pulling that together. But I bet if we actually asked teachers for samples of what they're doing along some of these things, that we'd get more than we think, and maybe I'm being optimistic here. And I think it would be a great thing to have a webpage with examples of, and it's project-based learning kind of stuff that's happening in particular classrooms. I mean, we saw, we saw it with the Bridger kids who came.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, that's, that's right down here. They went, they got engaged, they investigated, they did research, they were thinking critically, globally, there's, there's stuff happening. We just have to be more intentional about it and support it.
I want to reframe my question from a while ago. Again, this is great.
Right.
Very aspirational, love it, should focus on it. I'm still wondering if there's a walk before we run sort of aspect, right? That this also feels to me like, it feels like the portrait of a very, well, it feels, it feels like the portrait of, of a privileged student, right, who's going to graduate, you know, currently, right? We're churning out second students, right? And, and we need this for some of our students coming out of, out of our schools. If we're talking about a black boy, a sophomore in high school, who's on the verge of failing and ready to drop out, does it make sense to put this in front of that student as a, as for, not the student, but for us as, as a board to say, we want that student to meet all of these things? Or really, should our goal be, we want to get that student a high school diploma and the skills to get a job when he's 18? Which, which is not this, it's significantly before this. And I don't want to take away from this because it, you know, but I'm, I'm wondering if there's a multi-step process here of, you know, if, if, are these really realistic goals for the students that are failing right now?
Yeah.
Or do we need to go back to, I mean, what Amy says, right? And this question of like, do we just, you know, we have traditionally looked at skills instead of attributes?
So, so we had, we had that conversation at the SLT retreat, or, so I don't know if you saw in the, in the notes, where sort of like, the first part is where you looked at like, you know, what were the disproportionate of the data, and then the elements of the, of the vision, of the profile, of each distinct portions of the vision, that folks were like, these, these strategies, like, this right here, these, these characteristics, these traits are really sort of opening the way for strategies to really holistically get at some of those, some of that disproportionality. So I think it's, nobody, nobody had like, oh, do this, this, and this exactly, but I think people felt like there was a lot of room for things to be complementary, that it wasn't necessarily an unknown.
And I find it really concerning to say, privileged kids can meet these and other privileged kids can't. Like, there's also a little bit for me of, what are we expecting of students, right? So that we have one set of expectations for some, and another for others, and how are we setting out those systems that have led to where we are by kind of that take on things? So I think we want to be really careful when we talk about like, what, having different plans or different goals for different groups of students that privilege some students to say, oh, well, because you've been underserved, we don't think you can get to this higher level. I think we want that for all of our students. And I get what you're saying about how much roles can we see, but I think we need to examine how we're thinking about underprivileged or underperforming students and what our aspirational goals for them might be.
And also, just to your point, made me think about, you know, our alternative schools. So kids come in who, these are our, our most credit deficient students, say, at a high school level. And this is really the kind of work that goes on there and that goes on there first. It's like, we need to address who you are, what your life experiences are, what has brought you to this place before we can get to the skill remediation.
And I think Mount Scott Learning Center is a great example of the work that they do there. And Amy and I were both there at their event and saw some of their graduate videos that they do, and they talked a lot about, these are the kids that were like, not making it in high school and for a variety of reasons, and then sort of talked about the people that became, came through the work that the school did and were living into these very much so. But again, how do we measure it?
I think maybe one of the issues is because it's called a graduate profile, we're thinking about what this looks like, like a high school level, that they have them all, versus if you thought about in the sense of, say, elementary school, the inclusive and collaborative problem solvers, like, they're doing group or, you know, table work together, I mean, there's, and so I think, it's not like, here at 12th grade, you're at the most mature state of all these, and that's achievable, but really, how do you break it down and start the lower, the lower grades and sort of build, build on that? And then I think that the possibility of it all is much more real versus, yeah, they're going to be mature, you know, every one of these, when they're graduating versus building this into the.
So our experimenters now are not going to be all of these things for the 10th and 12th grade? I think that's where you're talking about the realistic. But maybe our, I mean, the, the goal of this is, what are the kindergartners that are going to graduate in 20, 30-something?
So the community spoke that this is what they wanted for every kid walking across the stage here, right? So underlying this, there was actually some method to the madness, this graduate portrait. But if you imagine backwards mapping, let's say, student snapshots.
Yes.
If each of these has a next compendium, has sort of a developmental rubric for each, and provides in yet some examples, in some cases are already promising practices in our schools, but not yet consistent across all of our schools, then you can start to design a plan that maps backward for every individual and use it. And that's, that's sort of how we conceptualize this.
And think, you can think about it like, linked to the GDC. You know, like, with this unit of study, how am I, you know, encouraging my students to be reflective, empathetic, and, you know, to be.
Right, so to give two examples, I mean, deep core knowledge is intended, that slide is to get at, they have proficiency in academic and areas, in the same way that, you know, we want racial equity to show up integrated in our lessons, whether social studies or any other area. So, so there are ways to sort of get at this at the same time, you know, I've been hearing, we don't want to just focus on the basic skills, but in the process of working towards these, that they're going to develop those skill sets and proficiencies as well. It's just, that will be in the details about how we sort of, you know, what the next level of work is going to be, you know? Because I, I could argue, well, we could say, third grade reading is important, we'll come back with some instruments for progress monitoring that. The issue here is that, it's not that we don't know what effective reading instruction is, it's just districts don't seem to have the will to ensure there's fidelity to making sure every classroom teacher is actually implementing it, and every child in their front of them is reading it very well, they don't have the time, they need classes, we don't know how to keep reading.
Right, right. Yeah, that's well taken.
It's a accountability question as well.
But during, during part of the visioning process, we did talk about 2030, right? But like, it would be, what do we want if we're starting from scratch with kindergartners that were in school this last year? What will this look like at the end of that? If we do everything right? So I think that's part of it, is when do we hit peak this? And, and how do we get there?
Yeah, this is more of a pedagogical question, tell me if I'm right about this. I seem to recall reading that there was a period of time in education where there was a real push towards everyone, towards college readiness, and that that actually did a lot of damage and harm to students that really weren't going to go to college, and that we sort of, you know, and again, it was sort of this idea of, well, let's prepare everyone for quality, and it really wasn't the right solution. Am I, am I right about that?
I think every kid that graduates from our school should be college or career ready.
College or career, and I, but, but, but there's a distinction there, right? And I guess that's what I'm getting back to, because I really appreciate this point, and I certainly don't want to be portrayed as, as setting, you know, setting lower bars. But maybe the question comes back to, is there a danger here of, of sort of repeating that, where we're sort of saying, oh, look, every student should go to college because that's the right thing? When in reality, every student should be ready for college or a career. And is this, is this comprehensive enough, maybe it is, to sort of capture that, the multiple pathways to graduation, multiple pathways to success, all those things that you could have students really with very different outcomes still being successful in each area.
I think for, what I would want to say too, and this has been true in my conversations with students, if you visit kids at Alliance, for instance, I would argue many of them have a very deep, you know, understanding. What keeps them engaged in our schools is not that there's some remedial school, it's that they actually have an opportunity to, to find a hook at a, at a community where these are the kind of qualities that, that foster sort of their interest in, in school. And so, you know, if it's good for one, it's good for all in some ways.
So I guess Scott's talking all the time.
So, so we need some protocols, and this has happened kind of often on in our history over the last two years, arguing and versus having some more discussions. I want to lay that out there. But I was going to make kind of the point that you did in our conversations last year with our multiple pathways, but this year, I guess, is that while we may have filled them and they're couching out core competencies in terms of transformative racial equity leaders, oh yeah, they are, they are on it. So we shouldn't, we should be careful in terms of saying, oh, wow, well, if you can't do bonehead math, then, then doesn't mean you're empathetic, or it may, and sometimes it's just the opposite of, oh, here's the math whiz who doesn't get people. So we should be, these are, these are distinctive traits that aren't necessarily related.
Julia? So I just want to, I guess, challenge a little bit the notion, because if you look at the data, every year of advanced education beyond 12th grade adds to the sort of your economic opportunity. And so most of the measures, if you are just a high school graduate, you're probably going to live in poverty most of your life, versus if you get a some two-year certificate or a four-year degree, which is why the state, one way, is the school of 2020. And so I guess I would be concerned that we accept that, if we know that that's true, that, you know, who wants that for their child versus, I think that's the way that Guadalupe phrased it, is that you're ready if you want to, but if you want to go into a career, you could do that, but the vast majority of the jobs now require a two-year or a four-year.
Does that include apprenticeship? And that's just two-year understanding?
Yeah, yes.
Well, no, that we do not have good data on apprenticeship.
But it would be the category of, you're not just going straight from high school graduation into the workforce.
But you're doing an apprenticeship. So I think that's where it gets kind of funky around that data.
So can you repeat what you said about if you only have a high school diploma, poverty?
This came out of the Harvard, which we can work in, the state, thing is that if you only have a high school diploma, you're likely to live in poverty.
I think I saw.
Poverty rate for those without a high school diploma is 14%.
So I think I saw data, so the data that I've seen is that, that, that over the last, over the last generation, is that there used to be, a generation ago, two generations ago, that if you had a high school diploma, that the gap between, sort of the income between high school graduates and college graduates wasn't, wasn't as, as far. What I understand of the data now is that, that a high school diploma doesn't necessarily, isn't necessarily an indicator of poverty, but it is, we are seeing sort of a wider wealth gap between the folks with high school diplomas versus college there. And I, I used to remember, Scott probably, I think it was off the top of his head, but the, it's, it's significant, like, I think by even like 40% or something, something.
Yeah, well, I mean, there, I don't know that this is getting us further, because.
Well, I mean, I could sit here and berate about how it, it doesn't help to have a BA at, at the age of 22, you're 50 grand in the hole.
Right.
That's a great point, you know, as opposed to you, you went into plumbing at the age of 18, and you're now making 100 grand.
So, so one of the things that I might want to sort of, kind of, think about the, the process of the vision was preparing, and going back to some of what Michelle said earlier in the, in the session today, was that this vision was about preparing sort of like, the next sort of 20, you know, the 21st century students, and sort of thinking about career, and thinking about the next level of education, but also thinking about future conditions. And so there was a lot of time thinking about different potential scenarios. If you remember the, the very weird, the very weird food production, and they were going to print, 3D print food, all those things, which, you know, that for, you know, in this, in this day and age, it's maybe seen out there.
Probably that was actually from calves.
Yes, something, something like that. So that, that it was a, there was a, you know, obviously a focus on, on career, but also sort of like wellbeing, and sort of like, what are those gains in the 21st century? Which I think goes back to what you all have sort of focused in on, is sort of, what's the right way to center this work around what students need, and the best that you can, sort of, you know, guess in terms, going into the future, what really is going to be the, the right focus to getting at, that student needs. I can't seem to get it here, but I was going to ask you some questions. For time, what I wanted to just show you really quickly is that on page 27 are the educator essentials. I'm going to try real hard to get the nomenclature right, so Gualope will buzz me if I'm not doing it right. But then the last, and then the last thing is the system shifts on page 35. And while you are focused on student learning outcomes, I thought it would be important for you to look at those two elements, and I might even err on the side of the system shifts, to look at sort of both what are the essentials that educators will need, as well as those big level system shifts to be able to accomplish the graduate portraits. So, so why don't you take a couple minutes, take a look at that, and if there's anything that comes up for you as you're reading that, we'll have a discussion about that. So as you look at those, let me come back to the graduate portrait. So I'm wondering if anything comes up for you in terms of maybe even areas of focus or elements of the graduate portrait that are compelling to you, or a place where you'd want to.
I had a question about the cultivating system-wide learning in a diverse workforce, which is on page 37. It says that PBS maintains a high-quality workforce that reflects the diversity of the broader community. I just know that given the data, that our schools are actually more diverse than the broader community, and so wondering how we, when we're staffing, how do we help make sure that, that their educators and our buildings look like the students during the building?
So, so if this is the aspiration, what is it like to have a short or long-term plan for workforce diversity? So what kinds of career lattices would be needed to go to place to recruit and if I had to, to grow them up within the system, so that we could end up with, is it teaching culture support staff that, that we're trying to, that, that we actually serve, which is on the case today.
Right, yeah. Does anybody know where the Portland Teachers Program, if that's still around?
Yep.
And I just heard this week, or actually last week, from a neighbor colleague, associate that works at Pacific University, and they have a really strong teacher program that recruits from the neighborhoods around there, lets people through the training program, and keeps them in those schools. Pacific University, so.
What is Pacific, part of Pacific?
Oh, and War Pacific also?
No.
Oh, it's a different.
Pacific and Forest Grove.
Pacific and Forest Grove, yeah, so.
So we're in regular conversation with the higher ed institutions, and we also, I guess, we might bring together the College of ED on a quarterly basis. So we actually have been whiteboarding all of the sort of workforce needs, district by district, in whole, as well as their programmatic yield in each of these areas. And there's clearly, there's not quite a match between the preparation, but also the diversity. And so we're actually talking about those candidate pools and success places and assesses them. And so we're actually talking about those candidate pools and success places and the SFS system bucket. How do you build those out? And so we're trying to get ahead of that.
Yep, yep. Yeah, so Pacific, Pacific University, and then there's Warren Pacific.
Any questions, other thoughts? I think I'm gonna move you into, I'm gonna get you moving. So what we're gonna do is, as you go into your groups, what I want you to do is I want you to think about, in the graduate portrait, you're not, you're not held to any of these, but the first sort of like conversation I want you to have in your groups is if you had to, because I'm cruel and unusual, if you had to pick three that you thought would be the first areas of focus, three of those graduate profile elements. So as you walk over to your groups, so here's, I'll give you like your, your post-it. So Julia, Andrew, Sarah will be the role of Craig. Jonathan and Dan, why don't you guys come over to this table over here? So Julia, Andrew, Andrew, Sarah, Jonathan, and Dan. At the table where Roseanne and Charis currently are, Rita, Ali, Stephanie Sodan, Stephanie Cameron, and Brenda Martina?
Ailey.
Ailey, yes.
That's okay, no, it's totally, I don't mind, I'm just gonna-
And then in the table over there, Scott, Maxine, Claire, Dawn, and Liz. And at the table where Jonathan currently is, Amy, Michelle, Guadalupe, Cynthia, and Roseanne.
A little over there, I don't know.
Are we together?
You guys are together?
Just grab me by the collar.
Rita and-
We're over there. We're keeping Karen over there.
Right.
Julia and Andrew, here we go. I'm so afraid of this guy.
This major song is so scary. It's totally fine.
It's like alien, really.
So you just call me an alien.
Oh, what I hate you.
Alien, without the, or Ailey, without the A, but we weren't worrying.
Go ahead and discuss your, your top three of the, of the profiles.
I say number one, creative thinkers and deep, deep core knowledge. Because that's kind of like what the community at the place is expecting. Someone asked me to do that, I'm like, I do, I know, last night.
I'm gonna, Amy, Sam. We're supposed to pick the three of these, if we had to pick three of these, which would we pick? To, to focus on. Like, if we could only have three instead of however many, nine, seven, eight, nine. If we could only have three instead of nine, which would we pick? I've already chosen number one, so now you guys have to do the rest of the work. I picked knowing stuff. Oh, the camera's on, right there. Reflective, empathetic, and empowering?
My full name is, oh, that's a Dan, wonderful, it's a Dan. But I am a Dan. But everyone who knew me when I was young, really before high school, I was a Danny. No, Danny, so I still guess it's why I'm a Danny.
Yeah, well, yeah, I don't care about the big optimistic or future oriented. Somebody that care about that, but I don't care about my top three. I can hear why I say that. Like, I think that sounds, I think if they're resilient, that's, it's into that. We're having a hard time, so we're gonna do the two, reflective, empathetic, and empowering. And then what's our third? Racial equity leadership's important. I said that I thought optimistic, future-oriented was less important than resilient. Positive, confident, and connected sense of self.
I know, between, because we said-
Or, I mean, is a reflective, empathetic, and empowering, is that more important than positive, confident, and connected sense of self? I feel very similar, so I would make it, yeah, so I'm making exact decisions over here. Because I feel like, again, the students that I work with, who are, the kids who are struggling academically, this is, this is impacting back. Right, and this is how they relate to others. So this, they might be a jerk, they could be like very confident but jerky. And this makes them like confident and not jerky. So that's interesting, if we do resilient and adaptable, lifelong learners, that's all very self-focused. So this is like self, this is self. Whereas this is a leader, that's connected to the world. Stewardship is sort of connected to the wider world. Yeah.
And I think you have some empathy for other cultures.
Or like the inclusive and collaborative problem solvers, we need that so they can fix, they want the climate change. But that is about, do we care more about that or their ability to relate to others?
Which is why we have nine, just pushing my way in, because that's how I am.
We could be like- Or we could be like Jesus with the Ten Commandments and figure out new ones that just capture all of them. This is my frame of reference, right?
But also be like, it's, it's got like a dignity attached to it, so it has to be right.
So there's Ten Commandments, and somebody says Jesus, which is the most important one? And he says two things, like sum up the whole ten.
So he totally cheats on the test.
I'm encouraging us to cheat on the test that Danny has given us. That's why you go, that was the Catholic church.
That explains a lot.
It's, it's-
It's the best table, really.
Lawyers stood up to test it.
No, I do like these tables.
I think we could do nine, no. That's not the assignment.
Oh my gosh, so much work.
Pick three.
To pick three.
We're not Jesus.
I was one of them.
Okay, so here's, they know stuff, they feel good about themselves, and they relate to others in the world well.
Yes.
So we've got the know stuff, we've got that they like have a sense of wholeness of themselves. So then which of these others do we say best captures that? They care about, they're good citizens, they care about the world, they're engaged with others. Is that racial equity leaders? Is that, because they're- And those are all different, but I think that's kind of what we're- Yeah, but that's not the assignment. Okay. And not that these are, yeah. I'm crossing out my crossing out. Okay, we got our three. And we can complain about how we're really wrong. And they are nice, they're good.
Yeah, so it's like here, here.
And here.
Yeah, and here, that's what I'm saying.
We, can we choreograph our presentation? Can we choreograph our presentation? They know things here, here. We're all gonna do that. Here, here.
Why do you even read his head?
Learned a lesson, haven't you?
I did learn my lesson, I just told Rita about it.
You need to get a sign that says cameras are working.
Yes, that would have helped, yes.
One time John, during a break, he put, he had an app, and he was like, here, make a face. Had like framed my faces, was supposed to be on a TV basis, and then he was like, okay. Is that live stream or is that for someone?
Record the work sessions, and then they are, the post are made to them. People request them, but they live stream.
The board meetings, and we like start the board meetings. Because I, I've watched them.
A couple times Rita's had the pleasure of the cameras, like, the system crashes, and then she's like, I'm constantly like-
And then she's looking up.
I bought, it's very stressful for me since my team has some people in the back. So I always say, what are they doing? Are they gonna toss it? And then I go back, like, the system crashed. Yeah. Why are the mics not working? No idea. Why is the machine not coming on? I don't know. So then I always run it back.
The answer is because.
We did our job. We have a choreographer, so we're gonna-
That was it?
Yeah.
We just had to pick three. We're just the best. Do we just get the assignment wrong?
So, so what do we-
We're done.
You drew three?
I'm like, I said left, we were doing it. I am a north.
Yes, I'm a northwest.
I have no objections to look.
Their leadership compass.
Leadership, yeah. North people.
CEOs.
Bossing their, oh. Bossy, make decisions.
We have gone forward, like, very linear. Can make these happen. West, also like CPAs, great detail.
They're very detailed, they're like project-
What's up with this compass?
I have no idea. I keep saying America.
There's the Gallup ones.
This is really more of a process. They're like, we are creative. Probably northeast. And then the south people are just really, just-
I bet you I'm a northeast.
In north.
All right.
Something here in north.
So I can get everyone's attention, I'll give you your- Okay, if I get everyone's attention, look at my coyote, his like ears are like- Coyote, my coyote. All right, oh my gosh, look at Scott's table, they're ready. And, oh my gosh, look at, Stephanie Sodan is ready. Oh, look at Sarah Davis is ready. Dawn is ready. Jonathan is ready, look at that, they're ready. Okay, so here's what we're gonna do. So the following people are going to be, are, the following people are gonna be, you're sort of like home team member, okay? So they're gonna stay at the table. And so for this table, the home team member is Guadalupe. For this, for this- For this table over here, it's gonna be Liz. For this table, it's gonna be Stephanie Sodan. And for this table, it's gonna be Sarah Davis, okay? So everyone besides the home team member, yes?
We would like to make a presentation to the group when it's appropriate.
Yes, okay. So you will be able to, so.
Be powerful and effective communicators over there.
Very powerful. Okay, you can just focus in there, I know, we wanna get to these goals. So, so here's the directions. Okay, so here's what you're gonna do, your home team member is gonna stay, and that home team member is going to record all that you say as a group. And they're going to represent what you write down and what you discuss to other teams as they travel. Everyone else is gonna travel. So what you're gonna do before you travel, what you're gonna do before you travel is you all have a SMART goal worksheet that you've seen before, as well as a butcher paper, where you're going to start to draft what you think could be your SMART goal. And you could draft, there's nothing from stopping you from drafting more than one goal. You may say, ah, we're not able to draft a goal, but let's try to get at least each table doing a goal, okay? So I'm gonna give you 15 minutes to be able to draft your goal, try to fill out your worksheet as much as possible. It doesn't have to be perfect, it doesn't have to have all the information, but this is sort of like your best thinking, using the data that we've looked over, the reflections, your thoughts about what was the most important, where you wanna focus, what are those student learning outcomes that you wanna focus on. And I'll give you 15 minutes, and at the end of 15 minutes, you'll travel, and I'll tell you what to do next, okay? So, does anyone have a question?
We would like to do our presentation now. We thought we were gonna have to share out the three areas that we decided were the ones, so we are going to show you how we decided that. They know things here, here, and here.
Very good.
I glossed over that.
So we expect other tables to choreograph responses as well.
Okay, Jonathan, you go.
Come on, does anyone else have any questions about what you're doing now? These are literally going to be your, your goal areas for the district.
So we keep working on our SMART goals as the big tables are just gaining the knowledge of-
Yes. Uh, reading, 3rd grade reading, I'm an algebra.
Scratch pad, this is final.
Yeah, I'm gonna go steal Amy's data so we can make it super specific with numbers. Don't put it out there, even though it's on camera.
Amy's only one, we're never brought her data tonight.
Okay, all right, so if you look up the data.
Okay, make our SMART.
So what's the next one?
Was the exact population being a member, so we have to, we totally transition this. I don't know why we did this, we're not doing something else. Which is why I wanted us to do our choreography. We now have to make a SMART goal.
So just one SMART goal, or?
I, of course, I have three. What are you, oh, you guys don't know what you are. No.
Mostly if your compass is broken, you're probably a southwest.
It doesn't have to come from this last discussion. It can be something that is, came from the discussion, or it can be sort of like a new discussion. Maybe it's not here, maybe it's here, or something else.
We have three.
And if you want more paper, you can come up with more than one. Three, okay.
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 I got like four hours of sleep last night, so I was hit, like, ridiculous. So just, yeah.
I would like the number that says, what they wanted to say.
So we should write it here, or?
Yes, write it on here.
If you, they have said they're doing, no pressure.
Anything. I mean, I, hopefully it's building off the conversation that you had. So you have those like whole, four whole areas that we talked about before.
So like conversation about the vision.
It could be-
Language art, precision C, all we have, speed jump, hard work.
Service, but see how far you've done.
So math is not in here. No, this is all S back, math isn't here. But I'm not seeing math.
Broken down by grades.
Is that just math or? Can you use a regular pen? Give me a headache.
That's not, I mean, that's, okay, 3rd grade. So 3rd grade black males. Gross. Growth.
Growth.
So we have to say in what area?
Blank charts.
Are we gonna.
Yes, I'm trying to find the.
Yes, so she's looking and we're gonna. Yes, but we're actually gonna have, I mean, we can say stuff. But then people actually know what I'm talking about.
Okay, math sucks. Or I don't understand it well enough to use the data. Decide which one. Be specific. I just wanna increase. I wanna increase. The directions say. But it increases by.
Five percent.
You could say. Yes. So S back, growth. Is. Our three-year average is thirty-nine. But it was forty-two, forty, thirty-six. And this is grades six to eight. Oh, this is math, not like what I said. So it haven't, they're not even growing.
So you'd like something like that.
Growing a full year is worth. So let's say that that's our goal. Would that be our goal? We need to, we need to have to get a specific data. Black male students. Correct. Black students. Yes. I think that's a really great question.
So first grade, black students.
Will demonstrate. I think black.
We don't know that black is the more.
African American and then it's.
But I don't, I don't remember.
No, I think. Do we wanna? We don't right now, so we don't have a way to look at that.
Cause I don't think it's. It's not, it's definitely not.
So this is the kind of sample we need. The percentage of black, uh, African American and Native African. Percentage of African American and Native African students who are able to demonstrate growth in reading as third graders measured by maps will increase from thirty-seven percent in two thousand nineteen to thirty-nine percent in two thousand twenty-two. That's the sentence they want us to have at the end.
Okay, except, so we're gonna have to get some.
Right.
Because presumably everybody's gonna show growth.
Right.
I think what we want is to have a goal that says at least some, some specific level of growth.
You can come up with as many as you want.
By.
Cause you wanna know, are you looking at increase of percentage? Or are you?
Okay, so this is the proficiency versus growth.
We're gonna focus on growth.
And I think, yeah, so we, we had this conversation.
Okay.
So, um, because especially in the early years, it's gonna be very much dependent on what people walk in the door. Right? So you get a kid who is. Is already reading Harry Potter in first grade. You get other kids who are watching the door and they don't have pencils.
Right.
So. So rather than proficiency.
Growth is a better way to look at it.
At least for now until we've fixed everything.
So third grade, um, African, black, African American, Native African students will demonstrate growth in language arts.
Language arts.
Um, from thirty-seven percent.
Or whatever the math, I don't know how the math numbers are.
Right, to. Or by, usually in growth, this is by percentile. Of passing.
Yeah.
So what you wanna do is for that to grow.
Right.
Do you wanna do, well, increasing growth over, you know, three percent, five percent over a three-year time?
Okay, so does that, does that mean age of students is growing regardless where they are? Regardless of what they want.
This is third grade. So this is all by.
But are they, right, but are they, is that growth number going to be between kindergarten and third grade? This student has grown by some number.
You would not compare cohorts. So what you would be doing is the third grade student in twenty-eight. We're gonna compare to the third grade student in twenty-twenty-two. So we'll be, apples and oranges will be the student comparison unless you do a three-year cohort.
Cause you wanna see the thing.
We can do a three-year cohort because you could measure from third grade to sixth grade. So then you're measuring a cohort. Now here's the issue.
But that's the problem is cause reading, they learn to read K-three. And so if we're not fixing, we've gotta fix that first piece to get them ready to do the rest of school.
So what you're, what you're looking at, if you're looking at growth over time, you would be comparing apples and oranges, which is fine. What you're really focused then on is classroom management, teaching strategies. So really what you're assessing is the teacher's ability to instruct.
Getting better results each year.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I still think that that is okay, cause the problem that we currently have with a cohort model is the third grade students in twenty-nineteen will not be your sixth grade students in twenty-twenty-two. Because we have so much mobility.
So I like that growth model because I do think that, I mean, I'm torn with this proficiency is holding accountable to like that student outcomes, right? Like are we, if we're student outcome focused, is, is proficiency what we need to be measuring then, rather than measuring the teachers through a growth model? Or do we measure a growth model saying that that will lead to long-term proficiency?
Okay, so this is where I want the tutorial in the debate between proficiency and growth. Okay, I want that to do.
So what I, what I just said was proficiency measures the student. Whereas the student, is the student proficient, are they able to reach the standards? And growth measures the teacher.
No, not really, but it's a, it's a generalization.
I mean, I imagine how many factors influence.
Absolutely.
Of course, all of these.
Okay, but I mean, I still go back to.
You're, you're thinking.
Over.
Time period.
Over three years.
I really think we should measure proficiency. And that would be cohort, which is. It's, our third graders, let's say only nineteen percent of our black male third graders finished third grade on graduate. We have to start in kindergarten, first and second grade to make sure that, you know, in three years, it's twenty-five percent.
That by the time they reach, is higher than.
Yeah.
The time they reach the third grade is higher than it has with no passing growth.
Right, cause I think that demonstrates growth. But you're right, we start in this place that we may have kids who are reading Harry Potter and may have kids who've never held a pencil. But that's what I would face problem to figure out how to put the inputs in to get those kids the resources they need and the teachers the resources they need. So that kids who come in with never having held a pencil get what they need, and the kids who've read Harry Potter are challenged in the ways that they want.
Well, that's the thing like Brenda was saying, once you know what you're measuring, then all the strategies aligned to make sure that you're moving that needle, whatever it is. There would be data telling us along the way if it's what's working, what's not working, how far deep.
So I don't think growth is a bad goal, but I think.
Okay, so we're at the two-thirds mark. So you've got about five more minutes to start getting your golden paymarks.
So I think.
Oh, we were big talkers.
Yeah. But I think proficiency is what the community expects from us that we can say we are helping. Okay, that's one.
All right, so, so we, cause I, cause I wanna hear about what you get for these evidence.
So when I. What I have in mind for the reflect and empower is to work on like what you and I talked about, about the trauma form practices. First, start with. Making sure that all of our counselors have the training. So really, we're just inputs in measuring staff who have trauma form practices, training, counselors who have trauma, students' training. And then being able to measure that, like year three, being able to measure that with. With our successful.
So let's try to go around that.
Okay, so, so how, okay, so I'm gonna channel AJ.
Yes.
So the thing about the counselors and the trauma form training and all that good stuff, those are inputs. And that's, that's your job.
Right.
So what the board is supposed to be focusing on is like the students. So if we have. So you're talking about in, in year three, we should be able to see the outputs. So how, let's use that as the goal. So. And, and I don't know what the data points are.
So what you and I talked about, which I thought was good was our students of color. Who could actually.
And.
Oh, this is, oh, you guys. Did you take my bag? You took my binders out?
No.
What did?
No.
Just when I thought it was going crazy.
It's cool.
It wasn't me.
Data that works your baseline is E-mass and S-back. But data that you look at for a growth rate would be S-back.
Right, cause if you say.
Does it get you like?
You must say Texas. On the west side.
Yeah.
So I.
We all talk about west side. We're about to have a native conversation right here. Let's go.
So those are two different data points. Those are two different data points that you wanna measure, but you could choose one. I think sense of belonging. Really want our students to feel. And students for others, I think we need to deal with this.
Just so I think it's, I'm just generalizing.
No, no, but I'm just. No, no, I'm just worth saying like this, but there's this sense of like everything on the west side is rich. I'm just saying that the, the east side that was middle class and diverse one, I wasn't.
Okay. So that's, that's that one. And then, what's the other one? This one.
Yeah, I'll use a different example.
She said we don't have to.
And I think that's. But setting a specific goal.
It's just, I mean, that's what we're gonna be saying.
Do we have our first goal or do we have our first, our two?
About our social.
Grade level reading, grade level.
School-wide. And then we could create an EFL survey to measure increases.
Are you doing the second one? Yeah.
Feeling empowered. Okay, let's do like, um. Forty-five more seconds to finish writing these down.
So on the west side, that conversation, I mean, you want some CS side, CS side schools. Cause then that really actually targets those twelve individuals.
It's a job friendly term.
Close to forty-five seconds.
Okay, so tell me what your goal is.
Two minutes?
Yes, so, uh, so it would be a written hour historically underserved.
I mean, like we're gonna start seeing different data in that case, for example, right? With the, every year with. So we're gonna see improvements against.
So I would suggest.
Minimum ninety-five percent.
An increase.
No, it's a color.
So in the example of the. The sense of. The goal is something along the lines of the percentage of increased. Were able to show proficiency.
But we wanted to increase over three years. Measured by the maps. Are we, does the survey have a sense of.
Will increase by.
That they have a sense, that we'll increase.
What's the percentage now?
We don't have the data in front of us, so we're gonna pick a number or a percentage or that is. I don't know what it would be. What's cheap and what's realistic? What's realistic in one year or five years?
You guys are amazing. You guys are amazing. I saw the arc. I'm happy.
District wide by what?
Were able to show.
Okay, so the goal I went real on is that the percentage historically under trip students passing the algebra one or high school, they take freshman year. Passing algebra on the first try will increase from percentages now to a higher percentage by seven point two.
Okay, except that's. Okay, so I'm just gonna critique it. So.
Yeah, please do.
If that's the metric, all we need to do to pass the metric is to have teacher.
Right.
It doesn't necessarily.
Master.
Irredigably.
Algebra, first try will increase from that percent. Well, cause if we say zero above.
Yeah, but, but I mean. You're gonna have. It's gonna be.
By.
We need to make a map.
Ask that question. How do you?
That's not our job.
Okay, but here's the other thing. Okay, so there's a.
And this is probably the one people might come back. Like K-12 or is it? Or better measure.
Seventh and tenth.
Okay, push back on my math.
I mean, that's, I, I would wanna know. Black kids, Native Americans.
What's white?
Can you borrow your data?
Yes. Please, please, I love to share my data with my colleagues.
So it could be. So what it could be is you got your data.
I wrote on that one.
Oh, the smaller data. The smaller data binder is right here.
Native. Is that, that would be read that? Focus in. But if kids fail to pass their, they only graduate, their graduation is forty percent, we should be hearing about, how are we setting them up to be successful?
Okay, but, but, before we double down on algebra, I want to make sure that algebra matters.
That's what I was going to do. It's going to rise all.
Freshman math, sorry.
A lot of, I mean, a lot, there is a very bit of.
So, what if we take it to freshman math? So, percentage of historically underserved students, math screen freshman math.
So I know that our, when we look at our data, there are, certainly our students are likely both in reading and in math.
Is a, is a, to avoid that is because.
That is.
To put different percentage goals. So the whole might be forty percent, American might be fifteen percent.
But math, if they're on track, like, that's.
It's less opportunity for that whole.
Because of those typical skills that are.
Whereas reading, once you've like, are proficient at third grade, you use, you've like, learned to read by third grade, so now you're reading. Whereas math, it's this continued building of skills. So, if we check third grade math proficiency, then the rest of our system can.
Just the organization.
No. And I, just asking, they were talking about freshman math, and like, how that really affects capability density.
Well, they don't know exactly the correlation, right? But they just know that the two data points in six can make us ask questions. I guess they're trying to kind of figure out, like, if you're trying to address.
I'm trying to address the longer-term lack of math mastery, rather than graduation rate, but it tells me there's some there, and like, it's struggling. And so, I know what a little wants to chase this sequence of math, so I like that mastering freshman math, whatever it looks like.
Which one of those can we double?
You want to borrow somebody who knows something that's.
Yes, so if you're looking at elementary levels, so you're corresponding to the third grade literacy, or the fifth grade fractions. What? So your parallel goal for literacy to go with the literacy goal of third grade reading is fifth grade fractions, not algebra, not freshman math?
Is all set?
Fractions are your key indicators for success in algebra. Algebra is your key indicator for graduation. But if you're looking for an elementary, a goal that can be measurable and accessible, fifth grade fractions. What's the percentage of historically, Sarah, what's the percentage of historically underserved students that currently master fractions in fifth grade?
Somewhere between.
Percent?
Okay, the camera.
It's still below.
Yeah. I believe less than ten percent of our black students score proficient on the S-Back. That's a level three. So, so ninety-seven percent are a level one or two, but also the math assessment, our new math assessment.
Well, I made a hundred. These are aspirations.
Okay, no, that's not reasonable.
Thank you, Sam. Everyone's attention, we're going to move. So, I'll tell you what you're going to do next. So I'll know you're ready to move, when you give me, when you look at, when you give me that like, great icon. Julia's ready, Andrew's ready, Stephanie Cameron's ready. Really is where I close to. Okay, so.
That's ridiculous.
All right, we're going to have pause.
What do you want it to be?
We have to pause.
Bring it in.
Okay, she's asking.
Say something.
All right, everyone, if you could pause, Aaliyah, if you could pause, Roseanne, what are you doing, if you could pause real quickly? Dawn, if you don't mind? Okay, thank you for the, like, the backwards coyote. Okay, here's what we're going to do. I know that you want to make these perfect, but this process will allow you to come back and really sort of like, make these perfect. So we're going to start moving with as-is, so if you're not done, it's okay. Uh, what you're going to do, your home person is going to stay there. Everyone else is going to take your four Sharpies, and you get to go visit the other table. We're going to click one clockwise.
It's really.
If you don't mind, just hold on. So you're going to move one table clockwise, and here's what you're going to do, on feedback, on the goal itself, you're going to use the post-it paper. So if you have questions, if you have ways that you might improve it, maybe a different direction, you're going to go ahead and write that on post-it paper on the goal itself. If you have ideas about data, or about, maybe questions about is it smart or not, anything else on the chart, you can go ahead and write directly on the chart. Okay, so go ahead, take your marker, take your post-its, home people stay, you're going to move one table clockwise, which that means this group is coming over here.
All of these, I guess, you get the Sharpies. I guess you must get different colors.
Take your markers with you, give everyone a marker. When you sit down at the new table, the home person is going to get two minutes, two minutes to describe the goal of the conversation.
Move on. Hey, you're, you're, you're only, you're only coming ready.
Jonathan, did you borrow my data and return it? We just used a table.
It is, it's yours. Okay, Stephanie, you have two, we'll give Stephanie two, three minutes to describe all our three goals. She's going to tell you like, what they struggled with, what they really worked to them, and then you all can just go ahead and discuss them yourselves. Directly on the S-Check, but use your, use your post-its for the goal itself. And you can just say like, I like that, or, ooh, I might try that a different way, or, you know, this is a, first of all, that's an interesting idea, did you ever think about this? Okay?
And you know what she does?
Productive.
Such a mess.
So, what's this, what's the, oh, we're just like, where are we actually?
Wait, isn't that the eleven percent?
Well, no, it's, it's the nineteen percent, but I'm, like, it's, where are the other, the other groups, okay? Right, so like, for example, we just.
Those are our schools.
Those are ours. Yeah.
So that, I, you're going to say, but I'm thinking, it doesn't seem very ambitious.
Right, it seems like way too much.
Like, three years from now, we will have increased to ninety percent.
Right, seventy percent of that.
Doesn't feel like a crisis.
We had this whole discussion at our.
I think, I think, you know, because the challenge is, we, let's say, we have the raw data for black students, I mean, we have, for third graders, we're going to have, that's what I'm going to.
So I think we should be like, way more aggressive, because, like, it's so much more expensive, and you're never going to cut out a couple of the on-track languages. So this is really, to me, it's like, that's great, this is a track.
Okay, well, give us all three, and then we'll go, yeah.
Okay, class of, class of twenty-five, what's the three percent of the students?
So at this rate, three percent district-wide.
Well, just like, you gave them back to like, the classes, so you have twenty-five students in the class.
Oh, it's going to be point seven five nine.
So we're going to go point seven five to.
Here's the data for that.
I think it might be, like, we wanted to improve.
What's, do you know what the average is of the district? Like, is it ten?
Oh, it's right here.
Like, it's really hard, or?
Did you go to the page in front of it? Yeah, this page right here. So, third grade, fifty-eight, the Oregon average is forty-eight. No, that's not fractions, this is, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry, what were we talking about?
That's.
That must be math data.
It's gold.
Sarah.
She was pushing that over there too.
Eighth grade algebra readiness, she gave us the stats, yeah, for fifth grade fractions, eighth grade algebra readiness.
Right, so. Don't be shy, like, you probably have like, three more minutes, lead into four. Don't be shy to get up there and write on it.
So be more aggressive.
Be more aggressive.
And the third one was just. Alaska native. And you can actually do it.
Oh, that's the sense of belonging, yeah, yeah.
That was the whole child.
So, like, I would say, like, if you had like, two reading coaches.
Right.
At every school or.
The other value of, of targeted goals is that it really, it actually allows you to figure out exactly which student you want. I mean, so, so the city of Portland, right, canceled homelessness. You know what they did do? They solved veterans homelessness. Now, there was a combination of factors, and this actually across the country, because the federal government kicked in a lot of money, so there were resources. But you could also learn every homeless veteran. And so, like, you knew exactly who they were, and, and, and then, literally, within like, twelve months, we solved veterans homelessness. And it feels.
Every student might need, you couldn't identify, because it's like, okay, so the other seven, percent of the kids in that class, like, there's twenty kids who are going to leave their grade not reading, but they could identify, like, why can't we bring in?
Yeah, that's what it feels like, it feels like the more targeted the goal, the actual more achievable it becomes, right? Like, yeah. Get every one of these students, tutor for every twenty students, and like, work with them, you know, aggressively.
The bottom is to talk about the green time rate increase.
Because, that's what a lot of grandparents do.
Okay, other, other comments? Um, yeah, I, I agree, we got to figure out a way to be more aggressive. And also, also, I think that, and, and I want to, I actually do want to, we do need to refer to staff about, like, realism, but it's, it's one of those questions, is it realistic within, the certain, the staff thinking within certain constraints have always been there, and as a board, in other words, we can tear down those constraints to make other goals more, you know, to make it more aggressive, more realistic. And because I think it just gets back to that, like, going from three to ten does not, in three years, does not indicate of the moral crisis.
I don't think I can leave the board, like, with that, like, we got from three to ten.
Right, right.
What other comments do we want to?
I was just going, I like the engagement. I think that's.
So how do they measure that?
That was from the survey, climate survey, right? Sense of belonging. My only question is, and I wish, does anybody have that climate survey results? Does anyone want to? Sense of belonging is an interesting one, but I feel like there was another question on there that I liked, that I found more.
Well, they had like, ones relating to student-teacher relationships, which seem.
Yeah.
Right, well, if you know the most important. Three N is the teacher.
Yes, so we were trying to use them to beat. So, we originally. We were trying to get one.
Four percent.
That's funny.
Twelve percent. This is less important.
Eight percent. Four. I mean, they're all important.
Let's see, no. Which is kind of a good way to do it. Well, so, okay, that's, we, feedback is.
We create goals like this, that's asking the system to reorient itself around a specific goal without any additional resources attached to presumably a new set of strategies or greater interventions, or what?
Well, how about on goal number three, just.
Okay, we're going to move in about one minute, so get your last bits of.
We talked about this, it doesn't have to be like a sense-side strategy.
Your, your feedback doesn't have to be. Is this the most compelling metric?
Yeah, the most compelling question.
Our budget is a loyal document also, and we're not going to let this. So, I think that if we develop the goals, then, you know, unfunded goals. So like, if we're going to move. You know, we realize there's a funding gap, and we have a potential there. So we need to do this. So I guess I think in general, in, in, in general, using the budget. Even though it's a real thing that we. It was great, because you had all the superintendent candidates from around the country, who had all different ideas, but, but they brought in.
Okay. So if everyone could pause for one moment.
High school freshmen, on the wall in the E.S., their virtual central office, and with the, so, but it was like, by name.
Okay, if everyone could pause.
We're going to do ten percent.
So we're going to do this again and again, okay? So hopefully, as you're looking at these goals, you're not only giving feedback on the content of the goals, but you're starting to reflect back on some of the goal that you all have raised, to see if there's redundancy, and to see if there's gaps, so that you can kind of keep on, keep on moving. So you're going to move one more notch clockwise, and I'll give you the same time for the home folks. You're, you're not necessarily making the case, you're just describing the goal. Let them, let them know how to be critical, positive, however you want. Keep on.
That's why it's not time-bound in there. True, you're, you're right. It's a low, it's a low standard.
How are you?
Well, how are you?
Oh my, they have three goals. Wow, okay. Very vicious.
Do you use like a slide box though?
No. We have two stickers.
Oh, yeah, Roseanne. Good trouble.
Stay in behind.
Okay.
Okay, hello, please explain your.
Sure. Ooh, that was, wasn't that, wasn't that the same conversation we had? Okay, based on, because we were at Flumby's table the first time.
And you're a strutter, but how would you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, and I wanted to say, like, here, I, I think if we, if we lean on the budget, it's true, it's, I mean, just saying we're leaning on the budget, and if that, if it's such a low bar, if we're saying, well, we can't do this, we can't do that. Versus if we put a goal on paper, maybe the budget's not in this year, maybe there's planning here, but maybe there's, yeah, so it's not like this year, in other words, when you're visioning, it's important to say, you know, I wanna reduce carbon emissions by, you know, I want the error to look like nineteen seventy, you know, I wanna go back to this level of, you know, awesome blue skies, without worrying about the funding piece yet. Because I think that the funding piece, if we set the goal, I feel like the money, you know, not right now, because we just got the budget, but in the next cycle.
I don't, I mean, I'm not comfortable just parsing out some of our subgroups, because we have other low achieving groups as well. So like, if I'm a, you know, Latino parent, and I see this as a stated goal, and my Latino, you know, Latino kids are, are only, I know, but Latino kids are, you know, they're not nineteen percent, but they're twenty-two.
So why don't we add, why don't we use, using an equity lens, we know that the top four, the lowest performing groups, could we add Latinos? You're saying a white parent is gonna say, so.
No, a Latino parent.
What, what if we add Latinos?
But it's just hard too, because what about English language learners, and what about kids with disabilities?
Can't we set the subgroup, like, like table one?
I, I think it's important that it's called out, based on my housing work that I do, where we had to pass a housing bond that said, basically, we're not focusing on white people today. We didn't say it like that, that would be irregular and wrong, for the housing group to do that, but we did say we're focusing on groups of color, immigrants and refugees, families that are currently homeless, and families that are at imminent risk of becoming homeless, so that there's gonna be white people in that group. But we passed that bond with that language, not policy breakthrough. And we, I thought too, I was like. Nope, people going for it, sixty-five percent, even with that specific language about who we're seeing. The data shows that these four groups are the lowest performing.
Would you go lowest?
Yes. Yeah, yes. That policy breakthrough says. State of Black Oregon. Yeah. Yes, and it's not to say there aren't like poor white people or whatever, but we look at outcomes.
I asked, was I gonna look at the data for English language learners?
Okay, so what we could also add, I would rather, rather than limit by the budget, I'd rather add those top five lowest achieving groups. So we're exclusive.
Okay, so right now, we've got a three-year average.
Yeah, see?
So what, what's that, the entire student group? Twenty-one percent remaining versus what is it for Native Americans gonna happen? Three-year average.
What did it say?
Forty-three point four. Makes you wonder, I don't know about that. So like. That could be low sample size, or? Except for, Portland has the largest urban population. Of the largest. Oh, I guess compared to other cities, Native Americans.
This one was shocking.
Oh, yeah, no, shocking. Wait, yeah. Two minutes, and then we're gonna move again.
I think this is too, I know it's shocking, but I think this is too narrow for a core goal. That's my opinion.
No, no, I don't.
We have all these, you know.
But I think that that is.
General math, I mean, that's, that's a wonky, like, it's hard for educators to figure out the fraction problem, like, trying to raise the math.
I was ready to fully accept.
Yes. So we're not saying, I mean, right now, we're visioning, we're envisioning a world where black kids meet at seventy-eight percent, white kids can still be at eighty percent, there's enough pie for everybody. This is like visioning, this is aspirational, I mean, do we, do these have to be achievable? I mean.
They do, yeah. Because that's part of the smart, yeah.
Okay, the smart.
Attainable, yeah.
Okay, okay, so.
Immeasurable, yeah. So I, I, for me, this is way too narrow for a board goal, because I think, you know, you have a goal around national achievement, more historically underserved students, and fractions are obviously a part of that, and let them, let them math be figured out, how they're gonna make sure that this gets addressed as you're trying to raise overall math. Right, and that's the reason we love the fractional in the third grade, is because.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, I mean, but I, I mean, I think that should be a strategy, but I don't. You know, when we have all these big fish to fry.
Okay, about thirty more seconds to finish up, and then we're gonna move again. Get your edits on there.
I like having a well-being question, but I mean, I think, like, sense of belonging is so subjective, you know? I just don't.
But I mean, I guess, but it's self-reported, so that's all that matters.
Well, how many questions are on the survey that, do you know that's?
Okay. Let's go ahead and move to your next group. Home team numbers, your, your shit will be like super polished.
Does anybody else have anything else? From our pink pad? Oh, last time I did it. We didn't take it as such.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Ready, proceed.
That was mine. No, that was mine.
Three percent.
Three percent a year, that's not much.
Four to eight when we were sending.
Oh, he was.
Everyone's hearing different things.
Especially at third grade, it's, I believe, I've seen quicker gains in lower years than higher years.
I can just write on that one again.
This is the best goal.
It's also easier to make more growth the lower you are, than it is when you're higher. We're gonna say it's twenty years before we can get there, then we'll have gone through a whole. Yeah, that's right, because if you, if you get three percent a year, it would take you longer than a whole generation of kids. So you're saying that if you've got a kid that's from all the way from kindergarten, you can't make more than three percent growth?
But, but, but I love Lou Lubay's explanation, because as we start off, as our teaching staff is getting better, and with what we're equipped, as we get better, as we get more proficient, as we get tighter, that three percent will jump dramatically over, over, after that, those first three or four years, to get everything, so that you can see much larger than for the first three years. It has gone entirely too late to talk about the professional development our staff needs, and third grade needs to provide these things, to actually target some of these goals, and just not say, we've already done it.
I have a question. Was like talking about like budget, and you're talking about, how does that, I mean, I need that money for everything, but specifically, how does that connect? Yeah. No, 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 no. I, I kind, I get that kind of.
If we have a budget.
Yeah, no, I get that. Okay, okay.
We'll have ten more PD times, so we're gonna have subs and per.
So then, it should be higher.
Along those lines, I love that, and I'm sorry, I didn't bring this outfit down, at school, every student would have a adult that knows them by their name, what they need, and what they're good at. To identify with and base decisions on. And, you know, with the changes, you know, OSS, and things coming out, that will help focus some of these efforts, that, I mean, that's, that's critical.
Okay.
What they're doing.
Uh, we're gonna go ahead and go back to your home teams. So if you could, um, go back to your home teams, uh, this is your opportunity to do two things with your home team. Discuss with your home team members that stayed behind, what you, what you saw, fill them in. Uh, take your goal, and you can look at all the feedback that you got, decide what you're gonna incorporate, what you may not want to incorporate, if you want a new piece of paper to write it out, if you want to.
Oh, here, I just said there's no stinkies, I think our goal is perfect.
I mean, I knew, I didn't.
You guys can have a minute and a half, because I'm generous. We're gonna move in a minute and a half, everyone be ready. Do a stretch break, so you're gonna go to your home.
I'm, I'm thinking about it, I definitely have that in my mind.
So just give them like two more seconds.
Well, how much in the?
Oh. Bit on in those.
That looked good really well right now. Yeah, of course.
The language, third grade reading, fifth grade math, art.
What did I come recently, I was at, um, Duffer, and they had, what was it, um, it was a, like a Mary Berry Cosmo, or Blackberry.
I don't know what I'm gonna motivate right now, I'm gonna motivate my. There's Mary Berry by Wild Roots. But I left it behind, and now somewhere else.
Yeah, we're supposed to be over there, but they're in our spots. We have slow-moving groups.
Like, I was like, I'm gonna do this, just lay down on the paper, and then you can feel like someone's yelling.
It's kinda funny.
You guys have low expectations for our skills.
10% really been three years.
And then 3% is.
When they're that low, they can grow fat, Brenda, when they're that low, they can grow faster. When they're that low, they can grow faster, I'm going to say. I've seen it happen.
I have too, but not in.
What's this? What? Right. But, 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 yeah, but I, you know, we didn't start off with all this stuff either, but I've seen it grow faster than that, from 3 to 10%.
Did you miss us?
So the, so the first team came from saying too low. And then just like the story of the three bears is.
Well, they haven't talked to Sarah. And they thought it was too low.
They were saying too low on the striking goals.
So hopefully, everyone has moved, oh, my gosh, look at this group. They are angling for a big prize. They're all at their table.
And we're working.
And they're worshiping. Oh, my gosh. I also want to point out some major differences here. I want to call out something that I've noticed.
Oh, I finally lucked.
Okay, you need to be back with your home group. No pressure, but Jonathan, Andrea, and Andrew, let me escort you to your table. Look at, Dan's down there.
Little baller.
Oh, wow.
And I am serious about that.
We got a little bit of this back.
All right. Everybody love their goal, right? It's all good? All good, all right.
Well, that's true. That's why we're talking about three years.
So Guadalupe's goal was very similar with the third grade, but his was for all of third grade. And right now, the grade across the district is 58% of reading proficiency. And his goal would be to increase it by 12% to 70%. And 4%, and it would be uneven, but that success would look like all of those designated groups, secondary groups would at a minimum also grow 4%. So he felt that way. Yeah, so I really thought that group's goal captured what we were aiming for in a way that was more holistic, and, yeah, they did that even better. Good job, ladies.
That's right. And to correct me some wrong, but I do think that was a correct question. I think exactly. That is, that is one of the questions that they, that I've seen. Which I will ask about.
Okay, well, I didn't have that information from that.
One question they asked, what about, what about, you know, what happens relationship? So in a sense of belonging, it says that actually, sub-questions.
Oh, okay. Specifically. It's not just one question, it's a, it's a group of questions.
It's a group of questions, yeah, so if you look at sense of belonging. I want to hear questions. So this is a long. How are your schools, 80%? How much do you. How much do you spend to the students? I guess we show you overall, how much do you see like.
That's great. I think those are.
Is that the same survey?
Say that on 71%.
I think. Well, I mean, I think that definitely goes to the positive, confident, and connected sense of self. And I think that's my sort of anecdotal experience, been that kids were struggling academically, too really thoughtful about themselves, and so that's, that's led to this, like, sort of cycle. That is.
Yeah, and I would actually, I'm going to design, I don't.
So the percentage of starting under third students here who work a sense of belonging will increase from 45%.
That's.
Whenever the survey was. When was the survey done, Rebecca? So April of 2019. And do we want to stay with that 9%? Or do we want to. To. Okay. Did you hear that? Something we're going to increase it by 10% to 45 by April of 2020. To 55, sorry.
Yeah, it's. It's at a process of 50%.
Well, do we want to, or do we want to award it like Guadalupe is? That it will be, all students will increase and by 10%? And that include, I think we should copy the way he did that. So we're going to make you change that. The percentage of students, like, just create contact with us. Your birth is 10%.
60%.
Is it 60% overall to 70?
Yeah, 60% to 70%.
And then what was that line about?
Which, which each. Um, increasing by at least 10%. That's, that's the way, that's the way.
So it says with a minimum 10% growth rate for each student group. A minimum 10% growth rate for each student.
Like, but I am prepared to, must show.
Yeah.
The work we're doing.
Yeah.
So these, these are our success.
I think a few backwards to me, where before you remember. And I think your question is, is this, like, even the question, is that an achievement? Well, we want to double that percentage, because I think we can pull that string. It's like, well, what is the intervention that hit you there? How long does that take? Does that take?
They got, they'll.
And now it makes more sense.
Definitely, that looks great. So that'll be the one we bring forward. I'd just send the data we already have.
And so, but. Here's a goal track.
57%.
We can't, because here's, these people are more aggressive. I got these areas for.
Do you want to take your plan or do you want to just nick those, push from those three? Is that what's up different? And say that.
Right. Right. You know, that's what I need, is having a conversation, but, but, but words. It just feels like a conversation. Here's staff's recommendation. Really good goal.
They've got the eighth grade goal, which I like. I still think, you know, the, the, I know that it's a really specific measure that fractions in math, but if that is equitable to third grade proficiency for predictor in math success, I think it's okay to drill down that clearly. And if we're at 3%.
So when you're all set, go ahead and put your things up on the table, on the whiteboard. So you guys are transferring data. You guys are close. You guys, you guys are close. Go ahead and put them on this.
Can you say if you report, if they are measured by climate survey?
Oh.
After belonging. As measured by climate survey.
Isn't that called the student success survey? Is that the same thing?
A successful school survey?
Yeah, no, I think we're totally. But to get to that pushback, we actually, we're spending a lot of time.
Did we say the percentage of students who report, the percentage of students, should we write it the same way with that? All students who previously, percentage of students who will demonstrate mastery in fifth grade of fractions will increase from.
Organizations use, and I'm not extra on that, but.
Will increase by.
More generic, we want to.
3% a year, 10% over.
Then your key results.
The proficiency.
Specific measurables that don't define getting there, but they say if I'm achieving these, then I know I'm most likely head that direction, because that's where it could be. We want to have after American bucket, double their readiness or their readiness.
Will increase by 10% over three years.
Oh, we're going to do these things in pre-K and A to get to that, that key result that supports the objective. In words, the objective is, is more generic, that more, kind of, you would say, yes, I want to do. Now, you guys tell them.
12% minimum growth rate.
More detailed data that would support that, and then what your strategies are, and what resources you need. Just to twist on this, where it becomes more detailed as you get more granular versus, you know, your goal having these specific measurables in the goal.
Okay, you've got one group, we're done. We've got, looks like we've got three groups who are pretty close. Go ahead, when you're done, go ahead and put them up here. Decide who's going to be your, who's going to be your best demonstration of concise leadership.
Yeah, you should be really good.
Concise, we got it down. I'm so tired. If you put me up there, I may just say all sorts of things.
We're going to film it.
Oh, wait, we are.
My first day, and I'm going to offend everybody. It's fine. He's using Jesus as a teaching tool.
Right, because, because if you double that, that's 80 kids.
You know, we all know what we.
Can I ask you a question?
I think it just say all the grade students slash.
Uh, when you're all set, go ahead and put yours up on the board here.
We said we're going to hire.
A middle whiteboard. Listen, we have two groups.
You could probably, you could choose by all the. You can be able to consider. That are also.
Capulation changes.
Doesn't it put it on the middle? Why don't you get your prize anymore?
We used to say that, please, do you?
Because that's what happens.
He's on a question.
All right, let's come back around the table. Um, why don't everyone come around the table?
I learned my lesson. Go to seven.
Uh, yes, but you. Back at the table.
But, you know what, my family. I was told, I was in the director. Basically, this is modified by the.
Julia, I'm so tired.
Right. Four kids, like 80 kids. Right. One classroom, 40 kids, you know, like. So we are about to.
Okay. But Lupe, come on back to the people.
What do you say?
Favorite song?
Two, three, four, five, six, seven. Who are we missing?
Rita's in the bathroom.
Bruce is in the restroom. Scott is so close.
9:30 at night.
Uh, I think we should get started. Okay, um, so what we're going to do is, uh, we'll just go straight down the line. If the concise leader can present your goal. I was told that Lake Brevity is a sign of leadership, and you all have been really great in your report outs. So maybe start with this over here. I know that you're leaders, because I've seen you do this before.
So our goal is that 70% of grade three students will read at grade level as measured by S-Math or other better, newer means by spring of 2022. Each subgroup of students listed out there will demonstrate a minimum of 12 percentage of weights growth over three years. And then there's a little chart I just copied from one of the previous. So it's specific. It's measurable. Attainable. Results oriented.
Results oriented.
And.
Time out.
Time out. So, yeah. Thank you, team.
Okay, um, let's go to the next group.
This one?
Okay, so this is exploratory territory, but I thought we needed an arts goal. We've got an arts plan, so this is sort of a little aspirational, because none of the, none of this exists, but every fifth grader is able to demonstrate a yet-to-be-defined basic proficiency.
Yes.
In one of the arts, and we've got the number of art strands that we're developing. So either you can, you know, I'm out of the top of my head, you can either read music or demonstrate something, or you can understand the elements of design, you have a way of showing that, or whatever dance step, I'm not a dance person. Whatever. Whatever. We don't have a baseline, but we can certainly establish one. And then figure out what, we don't know what reasonable growth is, but we can kind of figure that one out.
What? Experts know, like, the proficiency.
Yeah, well, well, I mean, we can, we can kind of.
Those rubrics exist for the arts now. Yeah. We'll be building out the GCS for visual arts and for. So, so part of the, part of the instructions were like, if you took a look at all the goals, if you wanted to add or subtract the goal, that's the thing.
Our goal was just similar to Guadalupe's group's goal, so we decided to change.
Okay.
So Scott decided.
Yeah, Sarah had some information.
So just like in terms of attainable, if you wanted, since the, you know, the K8 scope and sequences are going to be built out for visual arts and for dance next year, and then the following year will be music and theater. So there, so if, if, like, as this is honed in, we could have like a specific focus on metric for next year, and then the year after expand it, and then the year after, look at, look at things across all of them to mirror the scope and sequence work that's going to be happening.
And, you know, and in some of our goals, we can do stratified random samples of project-based work as opposed to something for every child to, I think, get at what we want.
Okay, so I'd want to hear more about that, but can I, so, so we might have a scope and sequence and all these different things, but what would be the proficiency measure?
And so that would be part of what these teams will be developing as they're creating the, the scope and sequence documents. They would be tying into the national standards for each of these different arts areas, and then collaboratively developing across teachers' metrics, you know, what are meaningful metrics for visual arts, what are meaningful metrics for music, what is a meaningful metric for. theater, um, so that we could then kind of set what that is, that the goal could then be based off of and grow from.
So, do these things exist somewhere? Like, do other districts have such names?
And we will, we will leverage existing work from across other districts, um, but also it is part of professional development for our teachers to kind of dig in and, and really dig into the standards and to look at what have other districts done, what other metrics are there and available, and so, you know, there, potentially, there could be external metrics that we want to just grab and start using immediately, but if, if we want to leverage the scope and sequence work, that, that, because it's kind of, if we aren't actually saying that this is what we think music instruction should be at and be like K-5, it, to me, seems a little unfair to then have, you know, but, but if we then say, this is what we really think music instruction should look like, and here are the metrics that are going to let us know we've gotten there, and then these are the metrics that allow us to show growth, because we don't, as with all of our other areas, we don't have common instructional practices, um, or curricula, or, or anything like that, even, even across our arts programs.
It is possible, like in other content areas, to establish proficiency exemplars in any of the arts disciplines as well, too, but it's just, it's in development now, the scope, but we could arrive at those as well eventually.
All right, okay, cool.
I'm going to move us on to the next group.
I have an issue with this goal.
We'll come back to that, so we're just going to present them for now. This one was a new one, so we'll come back to it. Um, okay, so the next group, which presentation?
The percentage of students who report a sense of belonging as measured by this student satisfaction survey, is that what it's called? Yeah, success survey, yield survey, yeah. Will increase from sixty percent in 2019 to seventy percent in 2022, and there will be a ten percent minimum growth rate in each disaggregated student group across those three years. We really liked the language and the way that this group did their, this group here did their measuring, and so we wanted to borrow that language. And then the second goal is the percentage of students who demonstrate proficiency in fractions in fifth grade as measured by SBAK will increase by twelve percent over three years. And there will be, again, a twelve percent minimum growth rate in each student group. And we chose this because Sarah shared with us that just as reading by third grade, you know, the K through three, you learn to read, and then you read to learn, fifth grade fractions is, is sort of the primary indicator of have students learned enough math to be ready to be proficient in the advanced math of, um, middle school and high school.
The research that published, the research says fractions and proficiency, right?
Fractions and whole number addition.
Whole number addition are early indicators.
Okay, so the next group.
So, um, we talked about that, um, in three years, increasing the percentage of black, African-American, Hispanic, Latino, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander, American Indian, Elatic Native students who are able to demonstrate high school readiness as measured by grade level proficiency in mathematics and language arts. Is that still an eighth grade goal? Or is it a, is it doesn't say?
I lost that.
And is there a percentage associated with that, or...
And because our, the state level data is not disaggregated, we wanted to lean into our SDP department to get the real numbers for PPS to then set, um, attainable goals for each of those subgroups.
When, when your group came up with high school readiness, were you thinking of, uh, middle grades indicators?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, so we have one, two, three, four, five goals. Um, I think right now what we need to talk about, so, so this is a, this is like a starting point, right? This is where you've expressed some intent and some focus. There will be some back and forth, it'll give, uh, PPS staff some chance to look back and sort of suggest ways to measure, to add some metrics, to sort of like help with baselining, to, to fill out all of the details, right, so that we can go into this like next step. The questions I have for you all are, is there something that's missing? Can you live with these goals? Is there something that you, you know, maybe you're sort of like, I don't know if this is the right focus? And do we need all of those goals, or do we need to add more goals? So, why don't we open it up? I want to be cognizant of time, so, um, first question is, can we live with these goals? Is there anyone that has like an objection? So Dana, then Amy?
So I like them. Oh, actually, um, I got a question on the last one. Isn't that really two goals?
Okay, so that was...
You got me.
You got an English, I mean, a language answer, man.
So it's actually two goals.
So the goal was high school readiness, and it is a composite of a couple of different metrics. And I know that was one of the comments, was that AJ sort of said one metric per goal. I'm going to disagree with him, because it belongs to management, which I actually have to background it. Composite goals are actually really like legitimate, um, if, if you're, if you're clear in terms of what you're measuring. So, so I'm not saying that we need to go in, we certainly could break it out, but if, if we're trying to measure high school readiness, then it's got a couple of different factors there.
So, truth be told, the belonging thing, that's also a composite.
Oh, that wasn't one question?
It's, no, it's, it's a set of questions that end up being a major belonging.
Is it five questions, Brenda? On the student success survey, the part about belonging?
I asked the same question.
It's four or five.
There were either four or five questions.
So, uh, Amy?
Well, are we done with this, people's comments on this goal?
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
Um, so, on this goal for the, around the arts, um, to me, it's problematic, because we know that our fifth graders don't have equal access to the arts. I mean, we couldn't have this goal until we have a fully implemented arts strategic plan, um, and so, I don't think it makes sense.
Well, part of what I understand is, in the board identifying goals, it may not be the state of the art now, but we would start to develop a multi-year plan. So, so some of these, some of these are going to be more leading-edge goals, we would have to build out to get to, uh, a system that actually not only makes that opportunity available first, develops the measures second, and actually starts tracking them. Some of the others might be more concrete. What I'm taking away from it is, you have a, a primary grade level literacy goal, you have a middle grades math goal or a fifth grade goal, you have something that's trying to track for high school readiness, uh, and you have an arts-related one, uh, so it, it seems to...
And wellbeing.
You know, seems to be sort of a balance over a range of grade levels. Uh, I do notice that I don't see a group that's called out for anything graduate portraits specific, uh, if those are important to us, in the same way, sort of, our one might be more leading, you know, future-oriented, is there one here that...
And we, we thought ours would look more like the positive, confident, and connected sense of self, that sense of belonging.
So that's what I was going to ask, is can we enact the sense of belonging with some of the strategies that are important.
Sure, yeah, some of that can be the backup for it. Julia, and then Scott?
So, um, I love the iterative process, I've had it spark some great conversations. However, when I see the, what we ended up with, I mean, well, I think there was rightly a lot of focus on third grade reading. And, um, so if you'd said, like...
Let's do that one automatic.
Right, and then, because I look at it as like, well, I wouldn't pick the arts as like the most, I'd much rather have some sort of high school, you know, college and career readiness versus the arts, because it seems like we're totally missing, uh, something in high school. We have high school readiness, but you're sort of looking at...
I feel like we need like a leadership, high school leadership demonstration or something.
Well, or just, like, you're going to graduate proficient in your, or subjects, or something like that, but it seems like we've stopped on the academics at eighth grade.
Yeah.
If, if this is the universe of it.
From the SLT.
Yes, so we have discussion about that as well.
Which, which one were you...
Under-service students' growth in core classes, um, college and career ready, under-service students' growth in core classes as measured by X. That one came from the SLT.
It's measured by what? X.
X.
You know, so for, for me, just, I, I would rather have, I'd much rather have something like that, um, just that our core mission, um, it's not that I don't support art, but if I'm going to pick five, so this is just...
Does it have to be an either or, I guess, with the other?
Well, if we're only getting, if we're going to put less than five, um, yes. And then, so my other piece is, um, because I didn't bring all my notebooks, um, the, I love the climate, the concept of the climate goal, um, but I was trying to remember in the climate survey, um, there was a question about, um, the, like, relationship with your teachers, or do you have some sort of relationship?
That's part of it. That's one of the questions.
It's one of the questions that's under the sense of belonging. There's five questions and there's sense of belongings.
It's a student-teacher relationship, is that the one?
Right, so I was thinking, like, really focusing, because sense of belonging doesn't necessarily, to me, talk, if you didn't know it was in there, like, with that being the one, so, you know, how do we...
Get more detail about that?
Get more de, more specific, because if that's one of five, then do we actually have five goals?
Not the composite.
Are you going to be a composite?
Yeah, I, I like the composite, I mean, because this, because it talks about relationship with adults, relationship with students, relationship, what are the others?
Yeah, I think one of them is a reason for belonging.
But the other thing...
So, um, there's four questions embedded within sense of belonging. Uh, how well do people at your school, uh, understand you as a person? How much support do the adults at your school give you? How much respect do students at your school show you? And overall, how much do you feel like you belong at your school? And this, uh, sense of belonging is, is really based on a lot of national research and international research, and it's really a, um, it's a key indicator for overall student success, is if they feel a sense of belonging, if they, you know, like, they have a relationship with, with somebody else. Yeah, I think in the SLT readings, I think it was Jonathan and maybe Cynthia's group, that where you, you were sort of, you did like preliminary looking at data where you saw that the, maybe it was like one of those measures, you could kind of track between that measure and then with student outcomes, and if you were like, do you remember last Monday? I don't, I don't remember, I think you were looking specifically at like Native American youth, but I don't... So Native American youth was the lowest one in this area.
And then I think they, they, well, in the group you...
There's a correlation between climate and academic achievement.
In, in odd data.
Yeah, yeah.
And we didn't choose to, we talked about having it be Native American students as our focus, but we switched that because it was seventeen students, so I felt like that was, we needed more numbers.
So, okay, so, so I, I guess I'm hearing that we have five goals here, but it seems like there would be some more interest in looking at, um, sort of like a high school goal. Scott, did you...
Keep, keep...
So, so I guess, you know, so, so one thing that we could do is, you know, I think I've heard that you want to land on less than five. What we could do is sort of, five or less, we could, um, we could sort of take this and then sort of, you know, the, the goal, I think that Amy, you, you read off, we could take this to the staff, they could sort of like propose some measures, and you could look at the sixth, and, you know, maybe sort of over time with more information, decide if you wanted to, you know, sort of keep it as is, or sort of, you know, so we don't have to, I guess I would say, I don't know that we have to winnow now.
So I would take, so our funny little like thing, our choreography, was really like taking this idea of the student success survey and saying, so we've got the inclusive critical thinkers with deep core knowledge, that's kind of like, we want to make sure kids have that proficiency and, and sort of academic understanding. And then a lot of the rest of these are, like, especially the positive, confident, and connected sense of self, how, how are they within themselves, like, do they know themselves, their abilities, what they're good at? And then the rest are about how they are with the world, are they leaders, are they able to communicate, are they collaborative, all of that, are they global stewards? And so what I see here is we've got, um, three academic goals, and then arts goal, and, um, so sort of four academic roles, and then we've got the one, students, uh, survey one, which is more about that self, like, how, do they feel connected, and how do they feel about themselves in the system? But we don't have a leadership goal. So I'm wondering if we look at, if we're going to have an, an academic set of goals, a leadership goal, and a sort of wellbeing, kind of, are they whole in themselves goal? What did those look like? And can we write composite goals that, that do, like, obviously, we're concerned about English, language, arts, and math, um, and, and where do those show up? Is that in eighth grade that they're ready for? I think third grade is that, they read to learn, and then learn to read, learn to read, and then read to learn, they learned math, and then they can succeed. Are they still on track at eighth grade? Are they still on track at tenth or eleventh grade? How do we write that in goals that sort of captures what I'm hearing, is the sense of how we care about that academic profile of students? And then those other pieces of, that our community has told us matter to them, of sort of self-worth and wholeness, and then leadership and relationship to the world, how are we capturing goals that connect to those?
Yeah. So Scott, and then, let's let Scott.
So, uh, kind of, kind of building on that, so at our last session, we kind of prototyped a, uh, connected...
Empathetic leadership.
Empathetic leadership goal, which could be demonstrated in, you know, some kind of project, um, as, as, as a possible goal. So I would want to throw that out on the table for consideration, and again, we don't have any metrics around that, um, so it's, it's more the cutting-edge kind of a thing. Uh, secondly, I don't, communication, uh, specifically writing, I mean, God, I see how god awful, and again, I'm over in Vancouver with high school students, and some of the writing is so awful. To me, that's both the communication aspect and the critical thinking aspect, um, being able to express that. I mean, if you can write it and or present it in your own words, then you, that's, to me, is a real mastery sign, and I don't think a test is going to be anywhere close to that. So, to me, that's a really important, um, piece of this that I would want to call out as a potential goal, and I know that's kind of, you're kind of going like this.
Well, can I, can I propose a process piece? Because, you know, I think that you, thank you for, for hanging in there and for being so like generative at this, this late, and I think it's really good. Here's what I would propose for a process piece, and, and maybe you can, you can decide if you want to go this way. I think that there's an opportunity for, for maybe some staff support and maybe sort of taking the feedback about what's on this, on this list, um, hearing what you said about being comfortable with composite, um, as well as the other, other areas that you've identified, and maybe coming back to this group with like a set of, of probably what would be more than five, although certainly staff may be able to come back with, you know, a, a lower, a lower set that achieves multiple goals. I like what you said about like, maybe there's like, you know, a way to, to think about different factors in there. We come back and then we propose that to you with also another cut around some proposed measures, uh, some places where there could be some metrics or baselining information that we have, and then, I would say, then we get to the, the sort of like prioritizing at that point, because you'll be able to have a little bit more information, a little bit more perspective on sort of what, you know, what might be possible, um, what, you know, what sort of is right, if you will, um, and, and sort of ready to go for goals. And then, you know, there can be another interactive discussion about, you know, sort of if you want to narrow down or not. Does that, oh, okay. Julia, and then Andrew.
I think that sounds great. The one thing I would ask that would be helpful is to have materials a couple of days in advance, and then also like what, what we should bring, um, because like tonight, it's like I should have grabbed my box out of the car.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, I was...
No, that's, it's okay, I just, so, it's, we're getting, you know, this is better interim session, but just so that as we narrow down, that we, that we don't feel like, oh, I wish I had that, because I feel like I'm uninformed as I'm...
Okay. Yeah, we can absolutely do that.
That'd be great.
Yeah, that's a really good reminder.
So I, I like the approach, and I particularly want to hear from staff, as you say, as they sort of work through these, some of the technical details, what's, what's missed, right, what are the things here that, that we didn't cover, that you need on the table? I think the whole question of prioritizing and winnowing is sort of interesting, and, you know, there's, there's nothing wrong with us as a board having more than five, but not more than five priorities. And I want to get back to, again, sort of an overall performance management system, you're going to have a lot of key performance measures, we as a board need to decide which ones we're going to focus on. So as we come out of this process, like, I would be very comfortable having five, six, seven, that we as a board say, look, these are important to the district, as long as we have the follow-up conversation...
we have the follow-up conversation that says, but in 1920 or in 2021, we're focusing on these two. And I'm going to be honest, that's, I have a little issue with the arts one. I feel like I need to preface this by saying like arts was so important to me as a kid, it changed my life, I can go through all of that, so like I'm a huge supporter, but if we have a million dollars and you ask me where to invest it, it's not going to be in that goal.
Yeah.
And that's the question that I think we as a board, because if the other six say yes, then that's fine, and we can then prioritize that as one of our goals. But I think that's what's going to be important to come out of the process.
Yeah.
It's not how many overall we have, it's where we're going to invest resources, making sure that, and I would say that should be no more than three and maybe even two.
Totally. So I think what I'm also hearing is like wanting maybe some support on sort of like how to have a facilitated discussion around like, how do we prioritize the focus area? And to see sort of like what's, what's doable, and I think that we could absolutely support you in that, so. Go ahead, Lupe? Oh, sorry. Oh, Julia? Rhea? Sorry.
No, I mean, this is helpful, because I think we're, we're starting to land on the topic areas, and I appreciate people are thinking of K-12 continuum, and just for additional direction for staff, but like right now, three of the five up here, talk about grade five, that's one here, for example, so I would kind of spread that out. And also, I like the attention on some of these, student leadership, relationship, I don't want folks to be restricted by the current instrument we use once to provoke dialogue, because what I got excited about is, this is a whole new universe now. We can design a graduate portrait related survey that gets at some of these qualitative measures and get at some of the things that I think that we want to, we want to measure over time. We want to be able to answer a question, are kids getting better at being, feeling optimistic? I don't know. What do they self-report? What does that look like across the grade levels? We can have a survey designed that is unique to Portland's graduate portrait, and then sort of have touch, but it's just, we're getting better. So that's one thing, I just wanted to make sure to mention is to not, this conversation was not intended to be limited by sort of, you know, what instruments may exist or not. Some may be a little more audacious and maybe a little further out, because they're in development, those topic areas, but if we want to be, we want to convey that where district the values are of education, that, you know, as a first step, we've got to fill in those pathways and a scope and sequence, and we want to start to sort of get at that being part of the whole education that our students experience. So that might work, that one might be a little bit out, but it's certainly possible to arrive at measures there. But, you know, to Dr. Scott's point here, we're also dealing with finite resources, and I'm just looking at the literacy one, and I know what it takes to get to one of those percentage points. Four percent is pretty aggressive, and what it would take at scale to sort of provide the knowledge base, the training, the specialist, the interventions, the evidence-based materials, most districts have the seven-year effort to get that six, seven percent. So what it would take is, you know, we're going to want to manage expectation and how we actually accelerate per subgroups as well. So we're also designing goals for this year, starting out when we already have an approved budget. So I also want to sort of be realistic about, you know, what can we reconfigure a little bit to make a solid effort in this coming time of year and show some movement, but until new resources hit and we can get more aggressive about it, the goal, the target performance goal might get, might grow, you know, with each successive year, because we'll need this coming year to really define the intervention plan for transforming these outcomes.
Great. Rhea and then Julia?
Okay, I was deciding whether I need to say something, but like, okay, I'm talking now, so I guess I do. So I think for the arts thing, for example, which I kind of like, because it never occurred to me.
That's great.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you could have a theory of action that linked, that would show a real correlation between ability to do that and ability to do all the academic stuff. So that would, I mean, it would be interesting to hear from staff, like either, yeah, this makes sense, or eh, not so much. That would be helpful, I think. The other thing that occurs to me is, I mean, if we're, if what we're really trying to do is drive transformation of the system, it seems to me that kind of really honing in on the early years is going to be more impactful over time. And I don't want that to sound like, eh, kids are already in high school, they're, you know, sorry. But I do, I mean, if we're thinking about like really pushing transformation, I, yeah.
Well, and that can be another, when we talk about the prioritization, is sort of like figuring out like, you know, is this transformative or is this, you know, sort of like how far does it push the system within reason, and you'll have some response from staff. So Julia and then Scott?
So I guess one, just thought about what you did, just said one more general comment. But I'm just going to make one more general comment. So it's, it's more focusing on like the next step. So in addition to sort of giving material in advance and like what data we need, if these are going to, if staff's going to take this and, you know, make it into a more structured goal, so that similar constructs, having the actual data, because so many of these have subgroup information, so really focusing in on the data, say, you know, what the, you know, current achievement level is, but then also the number of students.
Like we have that over there.
Yeah, like, it seems like, it's a different conversation when you're talking about not just like the subgroup, but like Jonathan came up with the numbers, like, you know, there's 400 black kids in each grade in this city. And then all of a sudden, when you look at it that way, it's like, it seems...
Less than...
Is that right?
So it's, there's nine percent, I mean, it's 4,000 kids, just ballpark estimate, it's about 40 kids every grade. Sure, I mean, I, yeah, I mean, this was just super rough.
Anyway, because it's really like, okay, you think about it as like, okay, if you have 10%, that's 40 students, but if we're going to go to...
Right, 20%.
I just think it would give us like more data, so having that as sort of the next, yeah, totally, the next frame.
Just to clarify, what we would bring back as refined goals, we would provide decided data that we're referring to. So you could see how we arrive at, you know, a specific, we would clarify on the goal.
Totally.
Use the data set we look at.
So Scott?
So I want to test something for you guys to think about, and I may be wrong in this, but I'm hearing, I think, that we are still locked into math, reading, writing, you know, as we talk about these goals, and not into cross-discipline work. And I, I think we've kind of referred into that out of, out of habit. So I want to test that, and if that fits, great. If I'm wrong, that's, that's great too, but I sort of picked up a stream of that. And, you know, as much as I want to refer to reading, writing, arithmetic, the best way to do that may be through leadership, global, you know, so I think we, we need to think, we're not dreaming if we get stuck back in that. And again, I'm talking to myself as much as talking to the rest of you.
Yeah.
And I'm going to push back on the arts.
Well, we're not, we're not cutting it.
Oh, okay. Just, just planting that, planting that flag.
Yeah, so they can have a really robust discussion about that.
The other one thing to remind us about is that these are the goals we're going to be holding by Lupe accountable to as we, you know, do evaluation in the future. So those percentages that staff come back with, it's really that question of like, what is realistic and attainable, so that when we have to say at your next evaluation, you know, we're really happy and things are going well, that we can show the community that. So I think it's that, how do we set, set those numbers, those percentages? Because we talked a lot about it, 3% as in 12% across three years, like what does that look like in ways that are both aspirational and challenge us to do all we can for students, but also are realistic so that we can continue to build on good work in a way that is healthy and constructive?
So...
Just one last, you know, we've talked a lot about 4% is pretty, you know, if we're lucky, we'll hit 4%. We need to have a huge conversation with our community, because I think you were saying, you know, whoopee, we, we're all the way up to 31%. Yahoo.
It's the 70%.
We, yeah, we, we need to...
Well, I also think the value of having higher numbers and then also knowing what the absolute numbers are, is it makes you look for solutions outside of the normal ones, that, like bigger investments, that we need to, you know, change how, you know, what's, maybe make more fundamental shifts versus just an incremental shift. And I don't think you get to that conversation, because I can guarantee you, if we go out and say, we're going for a 3% per year change, I think my statement was, that means when I'm off the board, you know, African-American students will be at, you know, 16%, like, wow, I'm proud of that. So I think part of really fostering a bigger conversation in the community is pushing that, it's like, well, why can't we do that? Because say if you doubled from 10%, say you went from getting 40 black third graders reading to, you know, you doubled it to 80 students, you know, that's still 320 to benchmark. And so it's like, you know, are we, are we okay with just moving 3% or do we want to double it? And what, what would we need to do to do that? And it may be like, we're convinced we can't, or maybe the community comes in and says, like, we're going to figure out a different way to come up with the resources, or we're willing to shift some resources because we want 6% and not 3%.
So I'm going to, I'm going to do a rare thing, and I'm going to call facilitators privilege, and I'm going to, I'm going to close us up on discussion now, because I feel like this, what we're, what we're landing on is like really rich, and I think that it's the next phase of this, of this process together. So you're going to get some additional perspective, additional information, and I think we have to have sort of like all these overlays of conversations around like, you know, is this the right focus? Is it, is it, you know, sort of like where you want to land? And I think we'll, we'll sort of move on to that the next times we come together. And so, thank you so much for all of your time, and I'm sorry that it went a little bit long, but I have to say, like you, you really hung in there, and like it was really integrating to sort of like being in this process with all of you. I think, it may not look like it, but my colleagues were like, there was a lot of head nods, there was a lot of sort of like, I think folks are really excited about sort of coming back with some really good information for you.
Do we have other time scheduled?
We do, we have board meetings scheduled, so I think we'll have to, we'll have to, you know, sort of get this on the schedule, give us some time to do that, and so...
We'll pass it August 19.
We'll work with, like, yeah, our assistant is adjutant.
For passing our goal, for adopting.
So we will, we'll sort of, we'll work with Ravan, Stephanie, the superintendent, to try to work out schedules and get this information, so you have it in advance, lots of information. But I think, I think our, we did a really good job and a really good set of work here tonight, so I'm going to, I'm going to call us good and done. You did great, and thank you for all your thought and effort on this, but I think pat yourselves on the back, this is really good, and there's more discussions to come, we'll maybe...
Thank you, Dani, for setting up a really effective structure.